This regular meeting of Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:31 PM Tuesday, March 16, 2021, virtually in Room 137 of the Edison Building with colleagues participating electronically in accordance with Minnesota Statute 13D.021 until further notice. Members of the public are currently not permitted to attend these meetings physically due to COVID-19 pandemic recommendations. Interested members of the public are welcome and encouraged to view this meeting remotely at youtube.com/ISD535 where the livestream video may be found. This school board acknowledges that our PS sites are situated on ancestral lands of the Dakota people, and we honor the Dakota nations and the sacred land of all indigenous peoples. Present at this meeting are school board members Superintendent Michael Munoz, a non-voting ex-official member, and Assistant School Board Clerk Michelle Severson. Ms. Severson, will you please call the roll?
Thank you. Clerk Amundson?
Here.
Director Barlow. Director Barlow. Director Garcia?
Here.
Director McLaughlin?
Here. My apologies for being late.
Thank you. Chair Marvin?
Here.
Vice Chair Nathan?
Here.
And Treasurer Workman?
Here.
Thank you.
2.0, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes. Item 7.06 has been removed, and we'll come back at a future meeting. We're just not quite ready for that agenda item.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
We have approval. Amundson?
Second. Workman?
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Ms. Severson, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Director Barlow. Director Barlow. Director Garcia?
Hi.
Director McLaughlin?
Aye.
Director Marvin?
Aye.
Director Nathan?
Aye.
Director Workman?
Aye.
And last but not least, Director Amundson?
Aye.
Thank you. 3.01, above and beyond. Mr. Munoz?
Yes. Let me pull up my screen here. This is our February winners of the above and beyond. Get it up a little bit higher so we can get all the names there. And let me read a couple examples for you. First one goes to the Corey Hill staff. I want to recognize all the Corey Hill staff who have gone above and beyond by creating videos, interactive materials, and opportunities for classroom teachers to deliver the experience of Corey Hill curriculum and to our elementary and middle school students in distance learning model. They have spent numerous hours, and by the response from students and staff, it has been a huge hit. So that's the first one. And then I think I have one more. This one goes to Erica Bryant at Sunset Terrace. Erica is a teacher who is very passionate in work that she does. I worked with her on the district Equity Teacher Leader Team and have been inspired by her support. She is willing to have honest feedback within the group and have people look at their own personal work that needs to be done. This is a person that should be highlighted within the district. We need more people teaching our youth like Erica and giving them a strong example of what a powerful voice looks like and sounds like. We need more people like Erica who are willing to ask the difficult questions and put in the work that needs to be done. That time is now for Erica is here. So those are two. And then I'll turn it over to Jenny to pick a winner.
Okay. I guess my camera is not... I don't know if I can get my camera on. I'll try again. Okay. Well, we'll go forward. So Chair Marvin, Superintendent Munoz, and members of the board, my name is Jenny Amundson, and I'm president of the Rochester Public School Foundation. One part of the mission of our PSF is staff recognition and appreciation, and this is a wonderful way to do it. Tonight, we will actually, because there were 22 people listed, so we will actually draw two winners to receive a $25 gift certificate to a local business. So I need two people to pick a number from 1 to 22. Who would like to pick one?
I'll pick one.
Okay. Thank you. What number?
13.
Okay. 13. That it will be Troy Stanton. And one more?
I'll pick number six.
Okay. And number six is Amy Kirstensen. So thank you, and we will get these gift certificates to them.
Thank you so much, Jenny. We appreciate that. 3.02, boundary advisory committee. This is an information item. Mr. Munoz?
Yes. I'm going to turn it over to John Carlson, Executive Director of Finance, who will give us an update on the boundary advisory committee. John?
All right. Thank you, Chair Marvin and Superintendent Munoz. I am giving you a quick update here on the boundary advisory committee. We have met three times now with a fourth meeting coming up tomorrow. At our third meeting, we broke up into small groups again, and we worked on middle school boundaries. At the previous meeting, we had worked on elementary school boundaries. We are getting together one more time tomorrow to kind of refine all of our small group ideas, and then we are going to be moving into the community engagement phase shortly after that. So we don't have an exact date, but the week of April 5th is what we're tentatively planning to release a community survey. It will be an interactive where you can watch a short video and learn about the process as well as do your survey at that time. So really looking forward to moving into that phase and then collecting feedback and going back and refining down to one preferred recommendation hopefully for the school board sometime in May.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. And I know Ms. McLaughlin was an observer at last meeting. Ms. Workman and possibly Ms. Garcia are going to be at the meeting on Wednesday again just as observers. We don't participate, but it's wonderful to see the process that takes place. So thank you for that. Also, our viewers should know that the meetings and the information about the meetings is available on the website at rochesterschools.org about us, referendum projects, project progress, boundaries, and I'm sure everybody got all of that. But it's on the website. So thank you. 3.03, elementary learning update. This is an information item. Mr. Munoz?
Yes. Tonight, we have Jackie Peterson, Executive Director of Elementary and Secondary Education, joined by Kristin Mark, two elementary principals, and kind of give you an update on how full in-person elementary learning is going. Jackie?
I'm muted. Chair Marvin and board members, I'm so pleased tonight to have a number of our outstanding leaders with us for the next two items. Kristin Engbert is principal at Bamber, Mark Randall, one of our newest principals at Gibbs, and Melissa Stanky, who is just an outstanding special ed support at the elementary, and they are going to share some highlights and some challenges these first few weeks back in-person at elementary.
All right. I'm going to kick it off. I'm Mark Randall, and I am the proud principal at Gibbs Elementary, and I've been tasked with kicking this off. So I'm going to share my screen with you, and each of us just has a little bit of things that we'd like to share as we've gone to in-person learning and some of the challenges and what we call triumphs, I guess, as we've made that transition. So for Gibbs, and I'll kind of lean right in, we've just had a great transition to in-person learning. We've had a few challenges. I would say probably the biggest challenge, which is fairly consistent with some of our other schools, would be lunchroom and just trying to configure that so that we can have all of our students in the lunchroom safely, which we've been able to do at our school even with 677 students that would be in our building. On any given day, we've been able to space students out appropriately. The biggest challenge has really been we didn't have enough tables. So we had to actually purchase some more tables, and we were able to do that very quickly, and our custodial crew has just done an outstanding job of helping us get that set up along with our general Ed Perez as well. And then, of course, the setup and takedown is a little bit more challenging now too because we do have SAC that is in the cafeteria before school and after school. But again, our custodial crew, Brad Keim, has just done an outstanding job in leading that team and making sure that everything is ready to go for SAC and then also for the school day. And then, of course, drop off and pick up time is always a challenge, I think, at most of our elementary buildings. We do have a few more families that are transporting their student or students to and from school. So that has been a little bit more of a challenge, just trying to get the traffic flow moving appropriately, but we've adjusted to that, and now we're really in a good routine, I think, with that, both with our people that are out there and with our parents that are picking up and dropping off. Triumphs, way more triumphs than challenges. I can tell you that right now. Our staff have been absolutely outstanding in just finding very creative ways to configure their classrooms to appropriately space students apart, finding creative ways to get students to engage in their learning during the school day, and then, of course, using technology, continuing to use technology during the school day even though they're not doing the hybrid model anymore. So that's been just awesome to see the different ways that they've engaged our students throughout the school day. And then, of course, our students. That has been a huge triumph just to have our students in the building. And for me, being new, I've been able to engage with more of our students now that we're in the building full-time, and they're just so excited to be in school. And I hear them actually at the end of the day sometimes disappointed that they have to go home because they just love being in the building every day now. And there's just a cool buzz in the building with the students and being excited to be at school. And then I can't say enough about our students and how polite and respectful they are. When I greet them in the morning and other staff are, they're very respectful, and they always say hi, and they're just excited again to be at school. So that's been absolutely outstanding. And then I can't say enough about our parents. They've been very patient. They've been understanding throughout all of this. They've been respectful with their communication, and I know we don't hear probably enough of that, but they've had some concerns and some different questions, and they've been extremely respectful and polite with their communication with our office and extremely patient just with all the different changes and with all the questions that they've had and sometimes maybe a little bit of confusion with the different mitigation strategies and different things that we're doing and communicating out to them. They've just been awesome. So I can't say enough about our staff, our students, and our parents and all the work that they've done. And I would... And I definitely wanted to give a shout-out to our office staff, Kathy Ohm and Denise Holobar, and all the work that they're doing and continuing to do to make sure that things are moving in the right direction and we're starting and ending our day on a positive note. So with that, I will hand it over to Kristin at Bamber Valley.
All right. Thank you so much for inviting us tonight. So at Bamber Valley, on March 1st, we had about 638 students that were in-person with us, and we continue to have 136 full distance learners still, which ends up being six sections of distance learning and 26 sections of in-person learning. So our hallways are filled with laughter again and kids excited to be back. We have lots of celebrations, just like Mark shared. We are super proud of the resilience in our people. And by people, we're talking about our staff, our students, and our families, similar to what Mark was sharing, but just how people have navigated through the different learning models while in a pandemic, staying positive and problem-solving, and looking at things as opportunities to keep getting better and stronger. So just really proud of people for that. And with that, that amazing flexibility to say, okay, people, here's our next hurdle or thing to figure out, and then we figure it out, right? And we just try new and different ways. One celebration, too, is with attendance. We had some families, some kids we were worried about, especially during hybrid and distance learning. And as we have more kids back in-person, our attendance is getting stronger and stronger, and some kids that we were concerned about and we're seeing regularly. And that just feels really good to be back on track with them as well. And then our PLCs, our professional learning communities, that is what has gotten our instructional staff figuring out and troubleshooting all kinds of things together. And they focused on our prioritized learnings, which keeps us on our goal, working ahead and working toward kids always growing with their skills and learning while also remembering all the other important things that we're doing with building relationships and community and all of that. Some of our challenges, similar to Mark, Bamber Valley is a pretty big school, and drop off and pickup has been something we've had to work through, and we keep getting better with it every day. We have about three times the amount of families dropping off and picking up right now than what we usually do in a normal year. So we've had to do some staggering of the end times. Our beginning of the day, people kind of stagger naturally by how they arrive, but the end of the day has been pretty challenging, and our pickup times are taking almost 30 minutes. So we're trying to stagger times and keeping the flow of traffic going and keeping kids safe with that. We're getting better and better as we go, and families are figuring out our system, which is awesome. Our lunchroom also, we've worked really hard to have students not eat in their classrooms to give teachers a break, staff a break within the classrooms, but also for kids to see a different space, too. And just as Mark shared with the lunchroom, so our lunchroom, we can seat about 100 kids at a time, following all the guidelines, facing one direction, three feet apart as they're potted within their classes. However, we have more than that in grades three, four, and five. So we use a distance learning classroom that's near the lunchroom as an extra space for one of the classrooms to eat in there for third grade and fourth grade and fifth grade. So we use the full cafeteria with two lines going through, and then we have that additional space. But it was really important to us to try and figure out a way to keep lunches out of the classrooms if we could for teachers. We know that in some other buildings, they're having to do some taking turns of classroom use and all of that, but where possible, we're trying to problem-solve that. In addition, one other challenge has been coverage for our staff when they're absent. We are so grateful for the three float subs that we have at Bamber Valley, but in a big building, three is not always enough. And so just being creative about how do we cover a classroom if a staff member has to be out? Just for normal appointments, like in a normal year, we tend to have three or more sometimes, and then in a COVID year, of course, there are more absences, too. We're working it out and figuring it out, but just know that that's something that is a challenge. And then just the maintaining distance in full classrooms. We have some classrooms that have 25 or 26 or 29 kids all in it at once. So how do we keep the distances, keeping people safe, following all the guidelines? Again, our staff are being incredibly flexible and creative about it, but those are some challenges that we faced. Again, the celebrations are way more than the challenges, but just know that we're working through some of those things. So if you look at the next slide, you'll see a couple girls, they're jumping right by our sign. Those are kids coming back that have been distance learners, and they were so excited to come back to full in-person learning. You'll see some group work of some kids. We're still doing the three feet apart, but they're able to do some partner work or collaborating on some learning. Some kindergartners learning about their bodies and being proud of some of the work that way. Our music room, we're still doing drumming. We just make sure they wash their hands before they come in. They, of course, sanitize when they leave, and we're sanitizing the drums, too. But we have drums being played on a regular basis, which is awesome. And then we're still doing silly things like the Cat in the Hat and Thing 1 and Thing 2. We're in the building last week during Dr. Seuss Week, reading Dr. Seuss, Cat in the Hat, and being kind of silly. And you'll see a teacher, too. We had a bunch of teachers do things on the first day of in-person, welcoming people back with glow rooms, and we had an escape room, and lots of fun things to get kids really hooked into being back on campus and being really excited about being back. So thanks for letting us share today.
Hi. Thanks for having us today. In addition to the things that Mark and Kristin had mentioned, we also have our early childhood group that's back in-person as well as our elementary. And our special education teams have needed to hold many meetings to make the changes to the IEPs, which drives our services for our students. Not all buildings had DL-only special education teachers, so many of our special education teachers needed to balance their caseloads even in the current model to include those DL students. We have been welcomed into families' homes during our... Virtually during DL, and with every change in model, it is like another first day of school, as Kristin also mentioned. These pictures, and you can go to the next slide, Mark, these pictures are just a few of the amazing professionals that we have on our special education team. These include teachers and paraprofessionals. It includes our adaptive PE, which I have heard that if you walk past a gym, you might hear a good Macarena competition going on in there. Our occupational therapists are busy, and right now, they're helping to remind our students as they come back what the body looks like in our in-person school. So they're supporting the learners with body movement activities to improve attention and body awareness, as well as those fine motor activities and developing those other school skills as well. Speech-language pathologists are wearing shields during their articulation sessions with their students with a smile and taking all of that additional PPE in stride. Our school psychologists have stretched their problem-solving abilities during this time with the special education referral and evaluation process to ensure that students' needs are being appropriately identified during a pandemic. Members of the emotional and well-being team are working with students to process the emotions that they've experienced over the last year. We have physical therapists on our team that are busy training staff with mobility equipment because students can grow quickly, and so they may need to be adjusted in a short period of time, which happens between our models going from DL to in-person. Our nurses have, during a pandemic, prepared for all of the medical needs of our students to begin safe in-person learning. And our special education instructional coaches are supporting this very large system and making sure that everyone has the tools that they need to be successful. Like Mark said, our groups are incredible, and they love the work that they do with our students. I'm super proud of them and all the work that everyone has done putting in. Managing between systems is tricky, but they've done it.
I just want to thank our three presenters and acknowledge the work you're doing, sharing on behalf of all your colleagues, and just call out the fact that our leaders have been incredibly collaborative in their problem-solving. You can be sure that the celebrations and the challenges that you've heard from these three tonight are shared, and if there's a problem that one building can't solve, they come together to problem-solve, and that is something we will not let go of is our teamwork in problem-solving, and there's nothing we can't figure out together. So I appreciate you all for representing your team tonight and would open it up if there's some questions.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson and others. Our elementary kids are in good hands, obviously. Board members, any questions? Mr. Barlow?
Yes. Excellent presentation. I did note, though, and it's a question of curiosity, have you, out of curiosity, queried the parents as to why so many of them are opting to drop their children off versus utilizing transportation services?
I think that has to do with just not wanting to have their children on the bus with, you know, multiple other children and just a level of comfort with knowing how they're transported to and from school. I believe that's the reason that's been shared pretty commonly.
Thank you.
Ms. McLaughlin?
First off, thank you for all the hard work. It sounds like you've been doing a great job. I just have a basic question. You talked a little bit about the number of students in-person, and we got some information from Bamber about how many are doing distance. Is that percentage pretty even across the board for the whole district between buildings? Or can you give us a little bit of data on that as to basically what the percentage is of kids who are choosing the distance learning?
You know, I don't have the exact data in front of me right now for elementary, but it's ranged in the low 20% for kids coming... Staying DL. We did have a number of students when we went all in-person that hadn't been in-person that opted to be with the group and back in school. So we had a little bit of shifting, but we were really able to accommodate our families as they requested those kinds of changes from DL to in-person. But it's around 20% of our kids that are learning from home still.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Nathan?
Jackie, did the experience change very much for the kids who were doing distance learning from when the rest of the students were on hybrid to when the rest of the students went in-person, or was it a pretty seamless transition?
I would say it's been very seamless. We've had a few classrooms where DL classrooms where their numbers have gotten low enough that we were able to disperse those students to other DL teachers so their DL teacher could go in-person when that was needed. But by and large, most of the kids have remained with their same teacher, and I would say it's been very seamless in that regard.
Great. Thank you, and thank you for all your work and for giving us all this information.
Thank you so... Thank you so much to all of you. We appreciate it. And then we'll move on to 3.04, secondary learning and mitigation strategies. This is an information item. Mr. Munoz?
Yes. I'm going to turn it over to Jackie Peterson, Executive Director of Elementary and Secondary Education, and she can introduce the secondary principals that we have with us tonight. Jackie?
Thank you. Yes. Again, I'm pleased to introduce some of our amazing leaders from the secondary. Before I do that, I did want to share, or I will forget, there was a question earlier about the percentage of students that are requesting to return in-person for... As we make this model change on April 5th, and I can tell you, at the high school, approximately... It ranges from 29 to 38% of our students are requesting to remain on distance learning. And at middle school, it's a range of about 18 to 28% of our learners plan to remain distance learning. And we did have an amazing return on that request for information from families and also a huge effort by our secondary staff to follow up with families to get that information if we didn't hear back from them. So we feel real solid on those numbers. So we feel real solid on those numbers. So from high school tonight, we have um, Troy Priggy, Principal from Mayo High School, as well as Nancy Denzer, Principal um, at Century High School, as well as Levi Lundak, Principal from Frydell, and Angie McAndrews from Kellogg. And they are going to um, take it away from here and share a, a little bit about secondary planning.
I can start from the high school. Um, good evening Chair Marvin, Board members. Superintendent Munoz, thank you for having us tonight. Um, we don't, at least at the um, high schools have a, a PowerPoint for you. We're going to talk through um, what we're doing to get ready for, in terms of mitigation at the high school and also um, our ninth grade planning for orientation. And then we will talk some about the pathways and what we're doing to help our students in transition between now and April 5th. Um, at the high schools, we're, the mitigation strategies are really concurring with every other um, building in the district, working on making sure that we continue to encourage the mask-wearing, um, our hygiene, our social distancing. And um, the high schools have done videos, preparing videos um, with students, actually preparing them to um, share with our students when they come in for orientation. Um, and currently in the high schools, we're working on making sure that our rooms are equipped um, with the appropriate desk and um, plexiglass, having our desk, our teacher's desk um, away enough so that they have some distance and also planning for any support staff that might be in those classrooms, um, supporting the students. Um, our lunchrooms, um, all of us will be using QR codes in our lunchrooms, but because of the limited space, we also will be having um, students eat in the gym. So we'll be pulling down bleachers and we've got QR codes in all of those places where students can check in um, at breakfast and at lunchtime, um, every day when they come to the school. So we will um, be eating um, in those areas of our, of our buildings. Our ninth and 10th graders uh, will have study halls that are planned in the classroom. And also in the classroom, they'll be, um, everyone will have, um, will be doing very tight controls over um, attendance-taking and you know, students, you know, making sure that we have everyone with seating charts um, so that we can continue to contact trace um, throughout the day and um, any other time that we have students in the building. Um, our, because our schedule is a little bit different, we only have five-minute passing. Um, so students will really be moving from place to place, trying to get um, to their next class. Um, we're hoping to have less movement in the hallways by doing that and more coverage by our staff. So we'll have people um, in and out of, of classrooms during passing time so we can just help monitor um, and encourage our students to be um, moving along, not gathering. Uh, we've also, you'll see in the buildings um, after we get our students all back that the amount of places that students can gather are really limited. So it'll be in our cafeterias, it'll be in our classrooms basically, and not very many other places where students um, can gather. Um, we won't be using our locker rooms when we come back to school for FIED classes so students won't be um, changing. Um, and we are communicating on a weekly basis with our parents and their staff, just continuing to update them on the questions that they have, um, things that we can answer. Um, there'll be nightly cleaning protocols um, in place and making sure that um, we're, you know, there's a lot of things we don't know yet because we haven't yet seen our students. But we're anticipating that when they come back, um, we will continue the same protocols and that all of our staff are going to be onboard, um, working with us to make sure that we have a great transition back in-person for the students that are coming back and for the students that remain DL. We want to make sure that they have an equally um, fine experience um, as they're learning in the classroom and just a different learning model. So we, we are um, planning, we're looking forward to tomorrow. It's our first planning day and having everyone back so they can start to, you know, really work together, um, whether they're still home as staff or in the building, um, making sure that they are preparing for um, returning to school. And as far as our ninth grade orientation, um, the students, so this is um, for ninth graders and any new students to the building that will be um, present at the high schools in the morning. Um, the students will be in small groups of 10 students or less and they'll be with um, either student government or link leaders. And they'll go through different stations where they'll learn about, you know, COVID expectations. There'll be some um, team building, some social distancing, team building activities, um, school tours, so people know where they're going to be going on the first days of school. And then some socially emotional learning activities in the classroom with a teacher. So that schedule will be from um, 7:40 till 10:40. Um, and then students, all the students will be invited to be um, in the lunch program. Um, so in the afternoon then, starting at 11:15, we'll do a shortened schedule for all the students to come back and we'll be ending our day um, at 2:33. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Priggy.
All right, thanks Nancy. Uh, Chair Marvin, Members of the Board, Superintendent Munoz. It's, it's my pleasure to be here tonight to talk a little bit and give an update on our DL supports. And like all the principals have said thus far, I mean, it varies a little bit within each building, but we're very similar um, in the way we're operating with our supports at the high school level. One of the nice things is we've, we've stayed pretty consistent and, and worked very closely with one another all year long, actually since last March, um, which is, which has really been helpful. So I want to get a shout out to, to the, the other high school principals as well. Um, I'm just going to speak for Mayo right now on, on a few of the numbers. And from March 1st through March 12th, uh, we've had 362 students come into the building and for various reasons, meeting with teachers, um, coming in for music lessons, guidance counselors, our school counselors are meeting with kids. And then we've had 44 students come in for SEL supports as well. So we, we've had a wide range of, of students coming in. Our, our van has been very busy. We've, you know, we have about 2,000 miles on our van delivering things to students who, who can't come in. We're picking up students that, that um, don't have a ride in, into school. We're bringing them in and finding them places, you know, social distancing's of course. Uh, finding them places to, to get some extra help and, and get some of those things uh, made up. So one of the things that we're really working hard on is still recovering some credit from first semester. Uh, our teachers have really done an excellent job of uh, you know, being flexible and honoring um, you know, some late work and, and continuing just because we, you know, because of the situation that we're in and the, and the kids, you know, are, are struggling. We have, we have a number of kids that are, are um, you know, the lack of motivation is not there. And not just with school, with things at home, the parents that we're talking to are, are just wondering, you know, what, what we can do. And, and April 5th really can't get here fast enough. And Nancy had mentioned this too, previously, that, you know, we want to be mindful of those students who can't come back for whatever situation they're in. So we're really working hard to uh, involve those students in a lot of the, the events that we're, you know, looking at planning, uh, coming up here with, you know, a, a possible homecoming week, uh, a prom, graduation. So we want to make sure we're, we're, you know, including all those students that, that are at home too. So that, that's just a, just a brief update on our DL supports. We have, I think we'll have five um, other days of DL supports before we get to spring break. Uh, not many, but we'll, we'll stay consistent with what we're doing and, and you know, trying to bring those kids in and, and giving them the, the extra, the extra help that they need. Thank you.
I'm going to launch into some middle school um, now and talk of kind of what we're doing again uh, to Chair Marvin, the Board members and Superintendent Munoz. Thank you for having us here as a platform to talk about what we've been doing to prepare for this as well as support our students in, in our DL supports. In terms of mitigation, everything's very similar. It's still changing and updating as we go. One big conversation we continue to have is around the lunchroom. Um, every space is different. Not every building has a dedicated cafeteria space for students. Um, so troubleshooting that i- is really something we work together strongly as our team, our middle school team, and we talk about, you know, where, and knowing each other's spaces has been valuable. Oh, what are you trying, what are we doing? So definitely the lunchroom has been kind of a big um, push point of making sure we're doing things. Um, I was lucky to receive some information from the high school in reaching out and collaborating with them to, you know, look at some of the opportunities to use bleachers in the gym. And that might happen in a space like Frydell where we don't have dedicated cafeteria space. Other general mitigation things at the middle school, it's the similar conversations. Where do we have our students even enter the building? Traditionally, it's uh, normally like there's a bus door or a walker door. Well, now we're being more intentional. How can we spread that out? And then even the arrival experience for our students when they get to the building. Uh, do we have masking and hand sanitizing stations in case they forgot a mask? And to encourage sanitizing, our facilities team, um, you know, from Scott Sheridan through Jerry Ernst and Dover, all the way through all, all our facilities have done a great job making sure we have those sanitation supplies, both cleaning supplies but hand sanitizer in classrooms, little kiosks set up that are ready for students wherever they need them. Other things we're having conversations, um, starting tomorrow with our planning day, is even just subtleties of making sure we're building in not just sanitizing time but hand washing time. Uh, that's something that's a little more common in elementaries, but even intentionality around it with our younger sixth graders and seventh graders as well, about making sure we are washing hands thoroughly before like lunch, as an example. That one's, you know, more than sanitizer. So those conversations and, and direct things are happening as well. And, and everything continues to evolve. You know, we're, we're working with our librarian who supports our middle schools to, what is the book checkout process? How do we use classroom libraries? What's the quarantine time on those things when they're done? To be consistent and then also build in the teaching of those strategies. On our planning day, we've got a staff coming in to support some of our um, student government leaders, uh, as an example tomorrow, to record some of those videos people have talked about. We're going to have a series of videos that will go out to students ahead of, um, their coming into the building on kind of procedures. Why is it important to wear masks? How is a mask worn appropriately? Um, we've all kind of even examined the traffic within our buildings, um, whether, and conversations at our middle school principal meetings about, do we want to make one ways? Is this going to be an upset of stairs? Is this going to be a down set of stairs? Do we have to make sure we're on certain sides of the, the stairwells, the, the halls and those sorts of things? Because every building is different. Some buildings even put in like a one-way walking, um, that's another mitigation factor to keep people facing the same direction as you've heard about lunch, classrooms and things of that nature. So all those things are coming into play. And then we also are looking at um, some of even the release time mitigation things. Uh, staggering dismissal. Our buses are often kind of clogging uh, the areas at our middle schools because we're the first ones typically to release and the buses will all queue up. So um, considering sending the busing students out of the classrooms first. That puts fewer students in the hallways as they're going to their lockers to um, you know, limit their trips there. And then once they've kind of gotten to the buses, right as about the buses are to leave, then dismiss those that are walking or being picked up. So again, limits people in the hallway at a specific time. And so we're having those conversations to what works for everyone and making sure we're all considering those things through our middle school meetings. And again, as, as we mentioned, you'll hear some of the similar mitigation strategies. Hand washing, no shared of materials, or if you must, proper hand hygiene, sanitizing of things in between classes. And, and as we mentioned, different mitigation things. Uh, we've all, I, I believe the secondary, most administrators, this afternoon, got a update that we're going to have certain HEPA filters in certain high, um, basically high aerosol regions of our building. A couple limited spots to help mitigate what could be a, an area that might be more concerned and make sure, just help people breathe, feel calm, feel safe in our spaces.
Thanks Levi. Um, Chair Marvin, Members of the Board, Superintendent Munoz. Thanks for inviting me to visit with you tonight. Um, I have two topics that are a little less stressful and more exciting than mitigation, but mitigation's heavy on all of our minds right now. Um, the first one that I wanted to share with you is what we've been doing for DL Plus. And I have to shout out to our counselors and social workers who have been doing an amazing job um, providing some support for our students. Um, we have two components of in-person DL Plus supports. The first would be students that are coming in for connection, organization, or just work completion. Um, and the connection specifically um, associated with their work with our counselors. And then work completion, we have some pairs that have been working with uh, students to get organized and get work done and get tests retaken and things like that. We have about, um, I would say 10 to 15 students on any given day that come in. Um, all of that's organized through our counselors and our nursing staff. Our nurses go ahead and make sure we're doing screening and checking on kids before they enter the building to make sure that we're safe. Um, and then they're here um, anywhere from a couple hours to a full day. Some kids we have come for maybe once a week just as they're check-in and way to make sure that they're staying on track too. So that's been awesome. Um, we also have um, in-person supports where students are making arrangements with teachers to work one-on-one. And that gets a little trickier to schedule because our teachers obviously are teaching live all day long. So um, it's a little bit harder to connect with them, but they've been really willing to um, connect with students and provide that um, academic support when the reteaching is needed face-to-face. Um, and there's a lot of um, reteaching and things that happen um, virtually, but face-to-face is also um, an avenue that we've been utilizing. Another support that we have been providing for students, um, but not necessarily in-person, are virtual groups. We started our virtual groups about a month ago. Um, our social workers really took that on. They're hosting groups in the areas of growth mindset, um, depression and anxiety and stress reduction. And we decided because what we had heard from families was that they had concerns about um, social emotional needs, um, or mental illness type things. Um, and often when we assemble those groups, we ask teachers or we ask students for interest, but instead we sent the call-out to parents and asked them just to let us know if they had an interest in signing their child up for a group. Um, and in a really super quick turnaround, um, our social workers were able to assemble six groups of about 10 kids each. And so right now they're working on five or six-week groups with um, about 60 students, about 10 kids per group, um, just addressing some of those concerns. So our counselors and social workers have been quiet but really powerful contributors to that support for our students. Um, the other really fun thing we get to tell you about is our plans for March 23rd. Um, and we have two layers to that. First, our sixth grade teachers have been working with um, counselors and then our assistant principal, um, Ms. Lenander, working on a, a sixth grade orientation. Students will um, arrive by bus if they normally take a bus. Um, they'll come and spend the full day in the building. The morning will really be focused on advisory, getting acquainted, um, learning about, about Kellogg, learning about how to open a locker, um, learning their way around the building. Um, then they will go ahead and learn the lunch routine and kind of get a feel for the safety precautions that'll take place in the lunchroom. And then the afternoon, they'll actually walk through their schedule and meet all their teachers face-to-face for the first time for many of them. So that's pretty exciting for our sixth grade students. Um, our seventh and eighth grade counselors did a little exploration and found that we had about 75 or 80 kids that would be new to Kellogg um, in seventh and eighth grade, which seems like a lot, but it has been a whole year since we've been all together. So the seventh and eighth grade, um, we had had about 45 kids that will actually be coming in-person on that day. Their schedule will look a little bit different because um, seventh and eighth grade kids will still have virtual classes that day. So they will join some of their classes online for about the first half an hour and then do much of the same type of things that sixth graders will be doing. So they'll um, get to know their way around the building and learn a little bit about um, the Kellogg, um, or Kellogg program. Um, and I think that, uh, I think that about covers my two pieces, so. If you have questions, we are happy to. Oh, did you have something else to add to that too Levi?
I should have also mentioned that, uh, Board members, you have the mitigation strategies in Board docs. Um, so if you were wanting to look at a complete list of those, I know we anecdotally talked about those tonight, but they are, they're prepared for you to, to review if you'd like.
Thank you so much Jackie and principals. Board members, any questions for any of the secondary folks? You've told us everything there. Oh, Ms. Nathan has a question.
I'm just slow on the uh, the mouse click. Um, thanks everybody for um, providing this information. I've seen um, a few of the communications that you've sent out to parents, um, both throughout um, the distance learning period and in getting ready to go back. And it's really impressive. Um, it's, it's customized, I think, to each of the personalities of the buildings. Um, but it is really, it's really great to see using Smore and some of the online um, resources we have. So I really appreciate that. Um, I have a question about what was mentioned both for high school and middle school about um, support for the distance learners. You know, right now we have that asynchronous Wednesday, that's sort of a natural day, you know, for our distance learners to get things addressed. With the students coming back in the buildings and the teachers teaching simultaneously that the distance learners and the students in the classroom, how are those distance learners who need that in-building support going to be addressed? Um, now that we're in class five days a week?
Do, do one of you want to talk about the pathways? Um, we did share at a, a previous Board We did share at a previous board meeting about the pathways and how distance learners would be included throughout those pathways, but maybe our principals want to speak to that too.
I can try and tackle that. So essentially we have three pathways that we started developing during our hybrid planning. And they really focused on asynchronous pathway, excuse me, an asynchronous pathway, and then something we call a learning launch where teachers would start the class with all students and then kids at home would be able to break off and work independently. I think that our teachers really are thinking about ways that they can use all three of those pathways depending on what they're teaching. So one example that I thought of when I was talking, talking about, you know, how this could actually play out. So maybe a teacher would have a synchronous class period where they go over some basic information and make sure that they were grounded in the ideas that they're going to be teaching about, but maybe the next day that they would have a lab and the lab obviously isn't possible for students at home. So they might have a replacement activity that kids would do asynchronously while kids in school would be doing the lab. And then maybe the following day they get back together and work on a project. And so students will be able to work offline and hop back in if they have questions. So I think it'll be really important for our teachers to have the ability to be fluid with that depending on what they're going to be teaching. I think that one of the things that we have identified that will probably be tricky as we go is not having that Wednesday or an earlier dismissal time to be able to connect with distance learners. But we've really focused on making sure that not all of the instruction is asynchronous for distance learners so that they would be able to connect with teachers. And we'll have time available during target for them to connect and ask questions with teachers and that they'll have those opportunities during their class periods to be able to connect and ask questions.
And I can, I can talk just a little bit, just to piggyback off what Angie was talking about. We have, you know, our three days coming up here where teachers are going to be planning for, for this, for their pathways. And I can give you one creative thing that some of our chemistry teachers are doing right now is the students that can come in and do, you know, the small group labs, they're putting their cameras on their lab that they're doing so that the students at home can, can view what's going on. And then they're talking them through that so they can have a similar lab experience too. And I think these next three days of planning, you know, that's going to be our focus in the buildings is to make, you know, make sure that we're giving the students at home the best experience we possibly can.
Thank you. Dr. Garcia.
Yeah, so Director Nathan took my five-day-a-week asynchronous distance learning question. So I really just wanted to keep my hands up to let you all know that I truly appreciate both the primary and secondary presenters and Ms. McAndrews. I also appreciate you giving very explicit details about the mental health sort of interventions and infusion into the curriculum. I think that's, that's wonderful. And thank you for all the work you're doing.
I just want, before it gets away from us, I do want to mention, I heard Mr. Priggy utter the P word, prom. And, and want to let you know that we aren't just planning for academics. Obviously that's a very critical portion of what we're doing, but we are, we are planning for social emotional supports for students and activities such as prom, graduation, senior party kind of things. In fact, we'll be meeting this week with high school principals to, to just take a pulse on where we're at. Graduation will probably have plan A, B, and C. Last year, those who participated in our drive through graduation probably remember that we, we had a very successful event, even though it was quite different. And so we know we have that in our back pocket, but we also have the civic center still rented. I know there's a rumor that we don't, but I can assure you that we do. So we are talking about how we can safely plan for events like that and, and provide to the best of our ability. So since, since Mr. Priggy managed to utter that word prom, I wanted to make sure you know that we, we are, we are working on those kinds of, of plans as well.
Thank you for that. And I know that planning, especially those kind of events is even more challenging because state guidelines change, CDC guidelines change. So you have the plan and then, as you said, you also have plans B and C. But I think it's so important, you know, as Dr. Garcia said, for everybody to know that people in our schools are keenly aware of kids' social emotional issues and their mental health issues and are really paying attention to that. Thank you all for continuing to answer Ms. Nathan's next question.
I'm not sure it's a question for the principals, but I think it might be a question for the superintendent. I do understand that the Minnesota Department of Health has said about student testing, while it's not required, they're encouraging student testing. And I wonder if you could speak to that where parents can get information about that.
Yeah, we've put it out already to them. And then as we are preparing our, an additional communication out to parents that'll be on that document as well. One of the new changes that came out just last week is that students can now drop their saliva test off to their school and the school would be responsible for sending that in for them. And what we are doing here in Rochester is that each school is bringing their staff saliva test to the Edison Building and then we will package them up and ship them out. So for example, if a student at Century drops his test off at Century, that'll be brought in with the staff ones and we'll mail it in for them as well. So that was a new change that just came out last week through MDE.
But just to clarify, we won't be providing the test kit.
No, no, we are not responsible. Yeah, that's correct. We're not responsible for providing them. We're only providing them for our staff, but we are now responsible for mailing them in for them if they drop them off at their school.
Thank you again for that, for all that information, for the work, the great work you can continue to do. Thank you.
I do want to not forget one important part of this team. We have amazing collaborative principals at secondary as well, but also my colleague, Executive Director of Curriculum and Instruction, Brenda Witchman, who has been coordinating some PDs specifically for our secondary people. So I'll turn it over to her before we end this board item.
Right, thank you.
And I'll just invite Heather Wilman to come on and give the specific examples of what they've been doing. But I remember, you know, when we started to plan for bringing secondary back, I just turned to Heather in a meeting and said, can we like whip up some PD around the kind of support that teachers are going to need? And of course Heather came up with some great solutions for our teachers.
Well, I think the key to all of that is collaboration and making sure that we get folks connected with one another. So we just had a super successful teacher panel. We invited 10 teachers from neighboring districts and some not so close. We did have somebody from Pennsylvania and someone from Wisconsin. And those teachers shared just tips and tricks and things that have worked for them with having both in-person students and then keeping those distance learners going. So a lot of technology tips. I think more than anything, what we heard was that the teachers were affirmed and that having the students in the classroom is life-giving. And as soon as you have that energy back, it's, there's just an amazing feeling because that's why we've all gone into this, this profession. So I think that was very successful. We had 55 teachers that attended that. And then we've also done some pop-up PDs where we have teachers who are sharing just great ideas in the classroom and they've been willing to take 30 minutes or so and share with their colleagues. So great model. I think it's just, it's making sure that we amplify the voices of our teachers and make sure that they have avenues to share with one another.
Anything else? I don't want to cut anyone off. Okay. Thank you so much to all. Our next agenda item is 3.05 Board Member Committee Updates. Part of the responsibility of each board member is to serve on committees that continue the work of the district between board meetings. Do any board members have updates on their committee work? Ms. Workman.
And I should put my hand down before I forget. Yeah, so the Legislative Committee of the Board, which is a brand-new committee this year, has been meeting pretty regularly every Sunday evening for an hour, two and an hour and a half to review the, some of the bills that are coming before the legislature. And after some consultation with Chair Marvin, she recommended that I focus primarily, well, actually we decided this in our committee too, primarily on House File 1995 and House, Senate File 1820, which is, they're basically the same. And this is often what we've called the summer school bill. And there's some urgency to this because if, if this bill is passed at the end of the session, it's going to make it really tight for hiring the staff and the people that we need for summer school. This bill is fairly long, but some of the things it would cover would be community partnerships with businesses and organizations to develop, implement, and deliver a summer mentor model. It would include transportation to activities and events, meal reimbursements at events and off-site locations, neighborhood-based location rentals, providing childcare for credit recovery, students' credit recovery. I'll see a few others, mental health services and support, social, emotional, and physical health support, summer school learning, summer learning and enrichment programs, and other activities that are necessary to maintain the operation of continuity and services and youth development. And there are, there are a number of grants to apply for. I'm not going to go into any of the details of the grants because I know nothing about how those work. So maybe at some point Superintendent Munoz or one of his staff will be able to update us a little bit more specifically on that. So the reason I'm mentioning this now is it would be great if each board member, cabinet member, anyone else who is concerned about this would write a note to your legislature, legislator referring to H5 1995, if it's someone in the House, or SF 1820, if it's someone in the Senate. You're encouraged to write to the person who actually represents you because they pay more attention to their constituents. They're less likely to pay attention to someone who is not their constituent, which makes some sense. So I would encourage everybody to take a few minutes to do that. And the bills are online. Once again, that's HF 1995 and SF 1820.
Thank you. Any other reports, Ms. Nathan?
So I wanted to report on the Community Curriculum and Instruction Advisory Council that had a meeting yesterday, or two meetings actually. We got feedback from district staff on our World's Best Workforce Questions, which this committee will be revisiting again in the fall for the next World's Best Workforce Report. We also went over an article to help understand the underlying principles of the next generation science standards and had a great discussion. And then we got an update of where our elementary and our secondary teams that are working on the science standards implementation are. And our next meeting for CCIC will be April 19th. The Policy Committee met March 4th to review a number of policies that need to be reviewed annually. Unfortunately, there were technical difficulties with board docs getting those updated. So I think we can expect a briefing item at the April 6th meeting if we can get those issues resolved. And the next Policy Committee meeting will be April 8th. And the Community Engagement Committee is working on collecting some community feedback on school resource officers. So we'll have more to report on that at a later meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Other reports? Ms. Workman, you have another one?
Well, I do. It's actually not another one, it's another piece of this one. Excuse me, I'd like to also mention that we attended our first MSBA advocacy meeting, there are three of them in March, and learned some tips, tips and tricks on advocacy. A lot of it was related to advocacy at the national level, but I think a lot of it could be applied locally as well. And then if, if anyone has any topics that they would like us to focus on or talk to our local representatives about, that would be appreciated. So you could email me or Director McLaughlin or Director Garcia. Now, now I'm done.
Okay, thank you again. I have three committees to report on briefly. Family Engagement Committee, District Committee continues to work on ensuring that all families are engaged with the school district. They're working with the Housing Redevelopment Authority to go into neighborhoods where our students live to make sure that they bring interpreters with them, whether they go in physically or they have remote meetings. And again, they're doing, every month they're doing videos that they have translated into 12 different languages and each one is narrated by a native speaker. Our Student School Board meets monthly. This month we invited principals in to listen to the students, talk to them about what their hopes and fears were going back to school in person, August, August, April 5th. And then the Association of Metropolitan School Districts met and fascinating group of representatives from larger school districts like Rochester and bigger throughout Minnesota. And one of the big issues they're looking at right now is how to recruit and retain teachers of color, how to incentivize people, people of color to choose education as a career, how to support them, and how to make it more attractive for, for people to want to become a teacher and then support them when they do choose that career. Any other reports? All right, thank you. Then we'll move on to the Consent Agenda. Are there any items on the Consent Agenda that you would like removed for separate consideration?
Move approval, Workman.
Thank you.
So good, Garcia?
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Ms. Iverson, will you call the roll?
Thank you. Director Garcia.
Aye.
Director McLaughlin.
Aye.
Director Marvin.
Aye.
Director Nathan.
Aye.
Director Workman.
Aye.
Director Amundson.
Aye.
And Director Varmo.
Aye.
Thank you.
And Mr. Munoz, I bet you want to recognize some retirees.
Yes, I do, thank you. The first one is David Edwards, PE teacher at Mayo High School, been with the district 28 years. Bart Graffstrom, science teacher at Mayo High School, been with the district 30 years. Gary Comaneki, industrial technology teacher at John Marshall and Mayo High School, been with the district 21 years. And Ann Neal, English teacher at Mayo High School, has been with the district 25 years. And Wallace Olson, industrial tech teacher at Century and John Marshall and Mayo High School, has been with the district five years. We thank all of these individuals for their service to our district.
Thank you, Mr. Munoz. Then we'll move to 5.01 Strategic Plan Update. Mr. Munoz and others are going to provide the board with an update on the work of the district strategic plan. Board members, we've already had an opportunity to review the information that's been provided in board docs. After the presentation, we will take a few minutes to ask questions that we may have. And at the end of that time, if it's the will of the board to have a deeper discussion about the strategic plan, we can schedule that for, to be included in the April 20th study session that's already on the calendar. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, I'm going to start us off, just a little bit of background, more for our two new board members. This is our mission statement and this is actually the mission statement that was created the first time we did the strategic plan. Remember, we had a consultant come in and help facilitate that process. We had four public sessions, different locations, different times a day, and then also had three language-specific sessions. And from all of that work, we created this, this mission statement. So we felt this time around, we would keep with the mission statement. However, the vision of student success is something new, which is part of the second renewal of the strategic plan. The graduate profile, you've heard us talk about that often. Here's our graduate profile. I want to talk a little bit about how this, these categories were created. We did a thought exchange and we had over 2,200 of our stakeholders participating in that exchange. We asked... We asked them just one question, what skills should our students have when they leave our K-12 system? And from that first feedback from the 2,200 stakeholders, we created these graduate profiles. And then we sent it back out again with our stakeholders and said, did we capture what you told us? And they confirmed that this is our graduate profile. So then, once we had the graduate profile created, we spent a study session working with the school board to come up with these three universal goals. The first one is accountability, fulfill our commitment to students and families to meet the expectations of the graduate profile and enlist the community to share in this responsibility. Then we had one in student achievement, and also one in access and equity. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over. And we have a subgroup working on all three, each individual goal. So I'm going to turn it over to the first two. If you can introduce yourself, and I'll run the slides for you. But our first goal is accountability.
All right. Good evening, board members. My name is Brandon McCraffick. I'm a principal on special assignment in the district, and I've been working as a member of the accountability subgroup. And so one of the first things that we did upon starting this conversation was to develop essentially kind of universal goals within our subgroup. And taking a look at what the work that had been done on the strategic plan and the goals that Superintendent Munoz just shared, where we landed were these three subgroup goals, which is, we do expect that the domains and the specific aspects of the graduate profile are met by all of our students upon graduation. Taking that a step further, we wanted to ensure that we connected the graduate profile to family engagement. We did not want, and we do not want, the graduate profile to just be an internal document. We want it to be a living document that really becomes a part of everything that we do. And in order to connect it to family engagement, and in order for it to be that living document we want it to be, we need to ensure that all people understand the graduate profile. We need to ensure that our students understand those six domains, that our parents, our staff, and the community at large as we engage them in that conversation. So I think we can go up to the next slide. And I'm going to turn things over briefly to my partner tonight, Julie Ruzek.
Thanks, Brandon. Hello, Board Chair and members of the board. I am Julie Ruzek, Coordinator of Family and Community Partnerships. Also happy to be here with you tonight, talking about something that is one of my greatest passions, and that is family and community engagement. This slide has a lot to read on it. We tried bolding some of the most important pieces. But as I was thinking about how to talk about our work with accountability this year, especially this year, navigating through COVID, I think the key thing that I wanted to share, that we wanted to share with you, is our commitment to family engagement. And it was exciting to hear a board member just reference our work this year as well. Thank you so much. Because we are passionate about hearing from all of our families and building those relationships, and in some cases, rebuilding relationships with our families. So in order to get to the point where we can elicit that feedback on the graduate profile from all families, we recognized that we had some work to do in rebuilding and repairing and establishing relationships with our families so that we could have that two-way dialogue about the graduate profile and what that means to all of our families and students and community members. So this year, what you're going to see from our accountability group is a real, deep, and extensive focus on family engagement and establishing those relationships, creating places for open and honest communication, and responding to the needs of our different communities within our community. So I'm not going to read through each of the bullets here on this slide, but just really want to get across the point that our goal in the accountability subgroup is to focus in and dig in with our families, provide a space for them to ask questions, share feedback and opinions and ideas with us, and respond to them so that we can get to a point of focusing in on the graduate profile, hearing what each person interprets the graduate profile as, and then really building that together. So that's what many of these first bullets really is trying to tell you, that we have been digging in with families in a variety of ways this year, and will continue to do so. And then we believe that after doing so and getting that feedback, we will be able to get to a point where we have a shared understanding of the graduate profile. Let's move to the next slide. Whoops, I think that's one too many. There we go. And so that brings us to our third slide of, those were strategies, but we want to share with you the actual actions that we have taken this year. So you've heard my colleague Melissa Brant and I before, we've been to a board meeting to talk about our community town halls. We will continue to hold those, and actually, in some instances, have been asked to do town halls specifically focused only on education. So we are planning and hoping to get something like that up and running as well. We have had 10 community town halls to date, focused in with seven different communities within our community. My colleague, committed colleague, Melissa Brant, has been holding weekly Q&amp;A sessions with families that also have been referenced at board meetings this year in four different languages. And I think the key takeaway that we're learning in each of these spaces is, not only are we providing and opening up a space to listen, but we have a commitment to acting upon some of the requests and pieces of feedback that we're receiving from our families. So we're happy to be participating in these spaces, but also to be acting upon the requests of our families. We've been working in places to provide honoraria for family members that are participating on our decision-making teams in a variety of different places within the district. We're providing monthly mental health family sessions, that's also been referenced in previous board meetings, along with individualized mental health consultations for families. We've started our top five videos, also something that's been referenced, and the next one's coming up soon, so stay tuned. We've also received a grant for place-based meals and outreach in the Oak Terrace neighborhood, and we are working on establishing presence and a regular relationships and presence in that neighborhood, and hoping that that can grow into even more trusting and open relationships with our Oak Terrace families. The next one is yours, Brandon.
Yep. So the bullet there, researching Midas software, you may have noticed on the previous slide, we had one bullet that talked about creating a method where students can demonstrate their proficiency level in those graduate profile domains. And Midas is a platform, it's a micro-credentia-ing platform, that we have had a few meetings on, a few conversations on. And it would essentially allow us to build an online course that would allow students to perhaps watch some videos, do some asynchronous learning about the different domains, and then upload their evidence. And it would give students voice and choice in what that evidence is. So we might have students that, you know, just upload a video of themselves talking about what they have done to, you know, become a better collaborator, a better communicator. We might have students that do artwork to demonstrate that. You know, we really wanted to give them the autonomy to demonstrate their proficiency in those six areas in a way that was meaningful and impactful for them. So this system would allow us to do that. We've talked about a few other things, but we know we definitely want to narrow in on how will students demonstrate their proficiencies. And one of the things we really liked about this is, these are micro-credentiales that students can then take with them. They're digital credentials, they can put onto a resume, they can create a URL link to them for employers, or scholarship committees, or whomever might, they might want to provide access to them. So that's one of the things that we're looking at, on how we can be accountable to that, to those graduate profile domains.
And then the final piece of evidence is just the expansion of our home visits and in the time of COVID, porch visits, in connecting with our students and families. And hopefully, you've heard in previous settings and other places how impactful these connections have been to our families, and that is one thing that we do not want to let go of once we are all back in person, and really maintaining those strong relationships with our families. So the next part is kind of talking about our next steps. But before we go to that, I think the thing to remember here, one of my most favorite quotes is that people support what they help to create. And really, as we're trying to bring life and breath to the graduate profile, we need more creators. We need our community to be in trusting relationships with us so that they can be open and honest and share their feedback. And so we've been working really hard, and will continue to do so, in facilitating those relationships and building those relationships, rebuilding those relationships, so that we can get to a place where those creators are making our grad profile come to life.
Next goal, student achievement.
Thank you, board members and Superintendent. My name is Peter Dodds, Elementary Curriculum and Instruction. Myself and two of my amazing colleagues are also here tonight to talk about the student achievement goal. I don't know, Heather and Sarah Louise, if you wanted to just quickly introduce yourself before we start this section?
Sure. I'm Heather Willman, and I work as Secondary Curriculum.
I'm Sarah Louise Henry, and I'm the Equity Coordinator for Curriculum and Instruction.
Great. Well, thank you for the time this evening. So looking at the universal goal of student achievement, really, the goal is to create that teaching and learning environment around the grad profile. And really, if we do those things, then our students are going to be engaged, more engaged, and hopefully, we see that learning and achievement go up as well. But if you look at the list of goals here, there's kind of three threads, I would say, within all the goals listed on there. One is leadership thread, two is student, and then the third thread would be our teachers. So just looking at the top goal there, talking about building the instructional leadership capacity of our building and district leaders. And then the next couple of goals there you can see are really about focusing on exposing and building the capacity of our students with the elements of the grad profile. And then going towards the bottom there, you can see those goals are really focused on the teaching and learning practices of our teachers. So looking at equitable grading practices, along with culturally responsive teaching. Certainly, we're focusing on the foundation of reading skills at our primary level, but then also looking at the other end of the spectrum, our college credit opportunities as well. So those are our main overarching goals. If you wouldn't mind going to the next slide, thank you.
So I'll talk a little bit about some specific strategies and actions. We won't read through all of them, but we'll kind of highlight a few that we want to make sure you know about. The first is just, you know, in this year of uncertainty, we've really been proud of the fact that we've stayed focused on instruction and high-quality instruction. So our instructional leaders have set goals, have really talked through those goals, and had time to reflect on them. And we've also had lots of sites that have engaged in instructional rounds. So teachers are actually able to observe one another. It comes from that practice of rounds in the medical field. But we've been able to kind of peek into each other's classrooms a little bit differently this year, virtually, but have learned so much through that process. So we're very proud of that. Another piece that we're really proud of is the fact that all of our students are receiving direct instruction in social, emotional learning. And you've heard a lot about the second-step curriculum, but now we're really building on how to embed that throughout the school day so that it's not just a lesson at one time of the day, but that there are opportunities for students to connect in every classroom every day. We also have worked really hard on professional development for equitable grading. And I know, board members, many of you have been on that journey with us. And we just had Joe Feldman visit and do a session with all of our K-12 teachers around equitable grading practices. We know we have continued work to do in that area, and so we'll be giving an opportunity for our teachers to do some summer work as well, where they can work with PLCs and really refine those practices around feedback. Peter, do you want to talk anything about the K-1 Literacy Partnership?
Sure, yeah. Many of you are aware of that, that this year, our K-1 teams of teachers have been focusing on the foundational skills in reading and really putting us ahead of where even the state standards are still being adjusted in ELA. But our K-1 people, if you look at the work they've done this year, you're going to see that it closely aligns, is out in front of the standards that will be coming out from the state. So it's been a lot of work, very proud of the K-1 people for how they've done the learning this year. And it's been a critical piece when we think about literacy and getting all of our students at that Read Well by 3rd grade. Sarah Louise, did you want to talk about the Equity Teacher Leaders?
So our Equity Teacher Leader Program is up and running. Educators have applied and were chosen at each site. And there are also Equity Coaches, which was an opportunity for those who were not necessarily chosen as the teacher leaders, but still had that passion and those leadership skills. So these are educators who have had the desire to deepen their critical consciousness and to also grow in their cultural competency. And some of what has taken place already in alignment with the plan is that, you know, they've taken the IDI assessment, and they've participated in like those one-on-one debriefs. So really looking at their intercultural development and seeing where they're at and where they want to be on that spectrum. And then also developing goals and strategies that can be completed throughout the year. They've also been meeting monthly to explore culturally responsive teachings and doing some introspective work as a group. During this time, we also like to highlight sites that are doing some amazing innovative work. There's great things happening. Teachers from each site also have the opportunity to have time to meet specifically with their site, and also incorporating the Equity Specialists who are at their site so that they're able to really individualize their site plan and develop just a culture of support by bringing some of the tools that are discussed and the information back to their colleagues.
So two other pieces we want to highlight about student achievement. One is just our commitment to providing opportunities for our students to earn college credit in high school. We've been working really hard on this, to provide more concurrent enrollment opportunities. And so we're proud to say that now we have both English 1117 and English 1118 offered at all three of our comprehensive high schools, so students can partake in that class right at their high school and get college credit under their belt so that they're moving into post-secondary with that. We've also got economics, speech, we've had Latin IV for quite a number of years, but we're just really working hard on looking for those opportunities for students to earn college credit. We know that that makes a huge difference in how successful they are in post-secondary, and so that's been a strategy that we've been working hard on. And then finally, I think, just a shout-out to the commitment that this district has made for focused coaching for all teachers. We are lucky everywhere we go, when we are able to talk about the instructional coaching program we have, and the amount of reflection and support that our teachers are able to get, people are jealous and say, wow, you guys have an amazing commitment to that. So we're proud of that. We think that our coaches have been a huge support as we've navigated through the various models, and that's a big key to high student achievement. So we'll move on to the next slide, where we'll just talk a little bit about some next steps. So one thing, when we think about that reflective, you know, we want all of our teachers to have the opportunity to have that time to reflect. And one thing that really helps us with that is our class tool, which is what we use to observe and evaluate our teachers, but also, we also use that in coaching. And so we have a continued commitment to working with that tool, and also working with one another as principals to be able to observe and... one another as principals to be able to observe and improve our own coaching as we observe in classrooms. So that's something that we see as a continued next step. Peter's going to talk a little bit about the work with the graduate profile at Gage Elementary.
Yeah. Chris Davidson and his team, amazing team at Gage have shared some really great work around the graduate profile at their site. They've been working really hard on trying to do that on a systemic level, and I think it's good to see they're surveying their students to see their growth in the graduate profile, but I think it's a good model that we can think about expanding system-wide. So we're looking closely at that. And then the second step is happening in our K-8 buildings. That's the key curriculum that's happening there, too.
We also want to continue to expand our courses that really look at hands-on, real-world experiences. So one success this year was we started ethnic studies, first year that we've ever had an ethnic studies class, and it's been really successful as I've talked to students and been able to observe in the classroom. The conversations that they're having are amazing. So we see that as a continued area for growth. We have firefighter mentorship, which is in its second year, I believe. And then we're also looking at emergency medical technician, which will be available for students next year. And then we have a new course, greenhouse plant production, which was a partnership with Sargent's, so students have some opportunity for hands-on learning there as well. So we're excited to continue to work on those courses that really help us live out the graduate profile, where students can see that opportunity to be ethical contributors. Sarah Louise, do you want to talk at all about our continued PD?
Yes. And so some of the things that we've reviewed within our group are critical consciousness and looking at how to just address some of those topics with staff that have been historically difficult and have been swept under the rug. We are providing tools and activities that staff can take back to their sites and work on communicating with other staff in promoting that open dialogue. We've also explored implicit bias in a way that was self-reflective, and then also looked at how to move forward and create brave spaces, not just with our students, but within employee relationships as well. There have been also separate opportunities for professional development. I've been meeting individually with sites as requested, and there's just lots of good things going on. And it gives an opportunity for sites to really just figure out where they're at and be able to start from where they're at and move forward and kind of share that education in their different schools.
And then the last one there, I think cleaning up our assessment process so we can really measure the impact of the science of reading through the literacy partnership. Excited about next year and having clear tangible data points to say, hey, look at the work that we've done around this and look at the growth that we've seen from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. Thank you.
All right. Last goal, access and equity.
All right. So my name is Nicole Andrews, and myself along with Erica Schumacher, who is the Early Childhood Family Service Manager, and Melissa Stanky, who is the Assistant Director of Special Education, will present our goal of access and equity in our slides. So just as a quick reference, the district began working on the strategic plan this fall, or the fall of 2019. And in the spring of 2020, the district sent a team of four individuals to join the Midwest and Plains Equity Partnership Academy to create an equity strategic plan. So the district had a strategic plan that they were working on, and then a team of four went to do a MAPS equity strategic plan. Once we all got back together, we decided that this should be a collaborative process and not working in silos. We were aware that the equity work is a framework, and in order to disrupt systemic inequities, it has to be embedded in all that we do. And so these slides are more of a summary of a comprehensive equity strategy that'll be implemented over time. So what you'll see is just a summary of a much larger perspective on equity work within the district. When merging our documents as well as merging those teams that were working together, we landed on six overarching goals with a few sub-goals built into those. One of them would be understanding staff transitions, looking at staff moving from buildings and also transitioning in and out of the district, increasing graduation rates for English language learners, really looking at increasing Black, Indigenous, and people of color representation in leadership positions here at the district, improving recruitment, hiring, retention of non-dominant identities, further disaggregating our data, providing professional development regarding equity constructs, so defining equity, looking at our policies and procedures, developing and identifying tools to assess curriculum resources and leadership. So that would be looking at our class tool, our ECAP, some of the things that we currently use in order to evaluate our classrooms, are they equitable? Do they have a space that specifically targets equity? And then developing an equity policy in which the board is currently working on. And then the last goal that we recently came to as a group was working on embedding a goal around rigor and relevancy in our learning environment. And so one of the great things that we've decided to do is after looking at the district's strategic plan and our MAPS strategic plan, we saw that there was a space around rigor and relevancy where we just didn't have a goal that was directly impacted. And so what we're going to do is work together with the MAPS Center to bring another larger cohort together to redo our process or to look at that process in order to build capacity for more of us to understand how do we go through a strategic planning? And then creating that goal after looking at any inequities around rigor and relevancy, and then at the end of that, having a timeline in which we can execute that goal. So we can go to the next slide.
All right. And that's me. So thank you, Nicole. For our strategies and actions, what is important to know about these is that these are, tend to be slow-moving processes when we look at access and equity. What the goal is, is to disrupt systemic issues. And so we will not be just doing these things as checkboxes, but we are going to be taking purposeful action to dismantle the inequities that we have found within our MAPS plan and our strategic plan. So some of this has already been covered because Nicole, as Nicole said, this is a part of everything we do. So I will highlight the pieces that haven't been talked about already. The first thing is our staff exit and transition surveys, hiring committees, and our questions are look fours. This is being looked at by our HR department with Carl Bachan and Willie Tipton, along with some of our leaders from our Employees of Color Resource Group, and are really looking at all of the details about how we better represent in our hiring committees, how we transition people throughout our district, and what practices we need to update. There is the why, the how, and the who that is included in the MAPS plan that will be addressed as they work through these practices. As Sarah Louise and Peter and Heather just shared about PD, I won't go deep into that, but we have lots of PD in place to help build capacity with our staff in the district. And so what we're really looking to get to is to have consistent and universal use and access to those trainings for all staff. Next is increased multilingual services. So this is an ongoing process as well. We've recently had some new hires of equity specialists in the district who are multilingual. And then an early childhood example would be that we are changing our early childhood tool to a tool that is more culturally sensitive. And with that, we will be hiring multilingual screening staff to be able to deliver that tool in a child's home language. The next piece is improving identity markers in data systems. And we know that this is a federally set thing. We are, identity markers that all students get and staff get are based on what the federal system tells us, but we do know that there are additional ways we can improve student identities and staff identities within our system, so that is being evaluated. Again, investing in restorative practices. This is additional training to build capacity within our district. We are very lucky to have a district administrator named Martine Haglund, who is trained in restorative practices, and she is working to help build our capacity to a much larger force within our district, so our staff and students have access to restorative practices. As mentioned before by Nicole, the ECAP, our Equity Context Analysis Process, is used to help identify and inform our current strategic plan and the MAPS plan. So we take all that data in, and we've used it to inform us. And what we hope to do is re-implement that process so we can continue to look at our data in a really equitable way. And then there is the Cabinet Equity Position that was included and requested by stakeholders, including students in our Employees of Color Resource Groups. So that is part of increasing our non-dominant identity leadership team members. And as mentioned before, we're looking to increase the amount of people who represent our students within leadership throughout the district. Next up, I have Melissa Stanky, who will go over our next steps.
Thanks, Erica. This slide does describe our next steps for our Access and Equity Group. We know that we've expanded our equity positions here in the district, as Erica stated, and some of these positions have been filled and others are still in process. We are invested in these next steps for our district. As others have already stated, the board's equity policy will be a significant tool to move our system forward with our equity work. As Nicole stated before, the original strategic plan did incorporate equity and equity constructs. And now, as we focus on this merge, the merge with the MAPS Center will support the process of embedding this equity work within all other areas of the strategic plan. To quote the MAPS Center, "This involves a top-down, bottom-up, inside-out approach with all other areas," or with our entire system. Continuing our work with the MAPS Center and their technician will help us with this to progress in this area. And the merge continues to address the area of rigor and relevance, which we've heard throughout this presentation. The ultimate goal is for us, is for all to understand all of the components of the strategic plan. So thank you, Board Chair and Board members, for allowing us to present this important work that we are all so very passionate about.
And thank you so much. This was just an amazing presentation. Board members, this, we, oh, sorry, Mr. Munoz, I just stepped in there.
Just here for any questions.
Okay. We will take a few minutes right now for questions, and then we'll have a process for determining, at the end of the meeting, we'll determine if we want to continue this at our study session. I see Ms. Nathan and Mr. Barlow.
Oh, I'm first. Okay. Thank you, Director Marvin, and thank you, everyone, for presenting this and putting it together. It feels like the culmination of a lot of individual conversations we've been having over the past year, so it's nice to see all of you in one place and all of your work in one place. One of the questions I have is about, I think those of you who know me know that I like my metrics and my data. So I'm wondering how the progress, and when you say the progress next steps, I'm assuming it's over this next year primarily, so let's just talk about the next year. How is that monitoring going to be measured so that the board can understand it, the community can understand it? And how frequently do you anticipate sort of bringing this package back to the board or the community to talk and to demonstrate progress?
Well, I guess, first part, I would say this is, what you saw tonight is more than just next year. I think it's next few years. I'll speak for the Accountability Goal Group. That's the group I'm part of. The ultimate measurement is kind of what Brandon talked about, what the, you know, we're looking at that Midas software system that really we could use, we can measure the number of students that have reached the graduate profile when they leave our system. We can, you know, we have that data. I don't know if any, if the other two goals want to talk about some of the measurements that they will be using?
So I can speak for the Equity and Access Goal for what we might be using to measure. So one would be our ECAP, so looking at our process in which we work with our principals, our class tool, where we're measuring what's happening in our classrooms. And then also with our MAPS strategic plan, our goals are specific to be measurable, so looking at how many staff of color are we adding? How many students are we seeing change in that graduation profile that we're supporting our English language learner students? So they really do have percentages and goals within that plan. So they have dates, they have goals, they have times in order for us to meet them, but they are meant to be continuous so that we can improve each year.
Thank you.
And I would also add to, Jean, that I think, you know, just even as we showed in the first goal that where you, next step is to have small focus groups. So I think the data would, you know, how many people, how many we had, how many people participated in those focus groups, and then the information that we were able to gather during those focus groups. I don't know if anybody from, Heather, it looks like you're on, so I'll let you have it. Heather?
Sure. I was just going to say, much of what's in the Student Achievement section, we also present to you or will talk with you when we talk about achievement and integration. So when we look at the concurrent enrollment numbers, we're really looking at our demographics and trying to make sure that we are making improvements in all demographic groups in terms of equity and access for those courses. We'll also look at ACT and what the demographics look like with ACT. So look forward to that because we'll be sharing some of those metrics when we share the Achievement and Integration Plan.
Thank you. Ms. McLaughlin. Oh, sorry. I keep cutting you off. Julie, go ahead.
Sorry, Chair Marvin. The only thing that I would add to what my colleagues have already shared about metrics is that we have started exploring some different growth models that we could use to bring all of this data forward to you. We've done a little bit with results-based accountability, but not enough since we've continued to add more members to our group. So one of the things that we'll do moving forward is potentially receive more training in RBA or another growth model so we can present data in that fashion as well.
Thank you. Okay. Now, Ms. McLaughlin. You need to unmute first.
I swear I pushed that button 10 times. My apologies. Some of my questions have been answered by this further discussion, so that's been helpful. But I would echo what Director Nathan was talking about in terms of measurement. I think that that would really help, particularly as a new board member, understanding where we're looking at making progress and how we're going to measure that, and also what Superintendent Munoz said about timeline. I think it'd be really helpful both to the board and to the community to hear more about that and more specifics about that. I would very much, and maybe I'm jumping ahead, but I would very much support including this in our study session, particularly because I would like to hear more about, again, specific measurable timelines for working on the opportunity gaps that we know that exist. I think the discussion of demographics was helpful. The one thing that I felt was missing from the discussion, and perhaps it's interwoven in some of these topics, but I'd like to hear more about the discipline disparities and how that fits into the student achievement, the equity, and the accountability. I think it fits into all three of those categories.
Thank you. And again, rather than answering all those questions now, I'm hearing from a couple people at least that you've got an appetite for a longer discussion down the road. Ms. Amundson?
Add on to what has been said about metrics. it is set ahead of time with the metrics or the measurements. So we're here right now, and we project at the end of the year or the end of the measurement period, whatever that be, we will be here. To have something very specific to strive for and then to be able to compare progress, and if we didn't make it, we'd say, you know, this is what happened and this is what we're going to do differently. So just to paint a picture of what I would like to see in what a goal is, would be a measurable goal, and then I would also like to see some of whatever we end up with put on the website with our, you know, we have a webpage with the mission statement and the goals and the graduate profile. Just a short report, this is what we hope to achieve, this is what we have achieved. Just to be a little bit more objective data associated with the plan.
Yeah, I just, yeah, just one comment about that. I think really, as Julie said, our focus is really not so much, we want, I think we're trying to get away from the traditional, you want to have 100% proficiency, blah, blah, blah. It's more, as Julie said, the growth model. We want to demonstrate from year to year, we're growing, and ultimately, yeah, we want to get to that 100%, but really the focus is on, you know, we want to be able to show growth in all those areas from year to year.
Dr. Garcia, and then Mr. Barlow.
I think if we are going to have a study session, which I would certainly appreciate, I can hold the majority of my questions. I did just want to say, you know, the Julie and Nicole, Erica, et cetera team, like, I love all the work that you do, and I definitely want to hear more. I'm hoping also that you can share with us where we, where there is shareable content, meaning if there's a landing page that you guys have on the website, or if you have social media, et cetera, I would really love to be able to share sort of over time the things that you're doing for the district, because I think that the people in the district would also really like to be able to see what's happening, like cool graphs, et cetera.
Everybody loves those cool graphs, for sure. Yeah, thank you. And Mr. Barlow.
Yes, I also echo, I'd like to see a study session. Wonderful plan, and I've done some research recently that speaks to the importance of ensuring that with plans, we'd call a strategic plan or whatever other name one might assign, there should also be policies to support the plan and funding models that align with the plan. So I look forward to that study session wherein we might be able to see that overlap and connections. Thank you.
Good enough. Well, I think at this point, I'm getting the consensus that we really do want to take a deeper dive into that, and what we'll do is send out an email asking for specific or general issues that you'd really like to focus on at that study session, and we can get a team to work with us then. Dr. Garcia, do you have one more question?
I did, which is, I think primarily for you. So in addition to the study session, is it possible for us to get an equity policy update as well? Because I think a lot of the things they mentioned were sort of contingent upon or connected to that.
Yeah, and actually, the equity policy is done. It's in the hands of, hands of some students at this point, who are sort of fine-tooth combing it, and we want to make sure that we have honored their input. They were involved from the beginning, but it's, attorneys have already looked at it to make sure that we haven't broken any laws. So Ms. Nathan, do you want to speak to that for a minute?
I can. We've received the feedback just this week from the student group, so we're planning to bring it to the Policy Committee at the April 8th meeting.
Perfect. Good. Okay. Thank you again, all of you, so much for the incredible work you're doing, and we look forward to hearing from you in the near future. This is really the foundation of what our school district is about, so it's important, important work. Moving on then to 5.02, Longfellow Flexible Learning Year Application. This is a briefing. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, this is, that time of the year, every three years, we're required to submit an application to continue the 45-15 calendar. The application is in Board Docs, but this is for us to continue the 45-15 calendar at Longfellow for the 21-22, 22-23, and 23-24 school years.
Okay. And Board Members, I think everybody's familiar with what the Longfellow calendar is. This is a briefing item, and I am guessing that unless there are any questions, someone wants to move this to action.
Move to action, McLaughlin.
Change Garcia.
Then moved and seconded to action. Ms. Severson, will you call the roll?
Can we have discussion about that first, please?
Sorry. Yes.
I'm fully in favor of moving things to action when nothing will change and there's no input needed, but seems to me that a calendar is something that families may want to have input on. And so to me, it would make sense to wait.
Mr. Munoz, do you want to talk about the process that?
Yeah, and I don't know, Amy, we do have the principal from Longfellow. Amy, if you want to jump on and share how you've included your families in this, Amy?
Sure, yeah. Good evening, Chair Marvin, School Board Members. Thank you, Superintendent Munoz. Throughout the last several months, we've gone through a process of collecting feedback from families, staff members, and our students as well. So I was definitely a unique year in that we weren't able to come together in person to gather that feedback, but we did have the opportunity to conduct some virtual meetings, so via Google Meets with our families. We also sent out a Google survey, and then we also reached out to our bilingual specialists, and they made some phone calls with our families too, to make sure that we gathered everyone's input and brought all of their voices to the table. I also was able to reach out to our staff members, gather their input, and then also to our students as well. So we, it was definitely different than a normal year with gathering that feedback, but we did work over the last several months to gather feedback from all in varied ways too.
Thank you, and that's important to point out too. Melissa, does that sort of satisfy your concern?
Doesn't, it doesn't change my opinion that if people have something that they want to bring to the School Board, we're not allowing them time to do that.
All right. Okay. So that caveat will vote on whether or not, with that piece of information, vote on whether or not to make this an action item. Ms. Severson, will you call the roll?
Thank you. Director McLaughlin.
Aye.
Director Marvin.
Aye.
Director Nathan.
Aye.
Director Workman. Director Amundson.
Aye.
Director Barlow.
Aye.
And Director Garcia.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's now an action item. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 approves the Flexible Learning Year, FLY, application for Longfellow Elementary for the 2021-22, 2022-23, and 2023-24 school years. Any discussion?
Move approval.
Sorry. Okay, moved, it's been moved and seconded.
I would like some discussion if possible.
Okay. Sorry, and I jumped the topic.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Barlow, discussion?
I appreciate the fact that the principal is available to provide direct input, and the public who would most be impacted or be impacted by the schedule, she has surveyed, and I absolutely support the effort and work that's gone into that, and I appreciate the foresight that was demonstrated here.
Thank you. Other discussion? All right. Ms. Workman?
Yes, thank you. I was looking for my hand, and it's like, I don't know where my hand is. I think I also appreciate the input from the Longfellow principal, but for me, it's more a question of process and principle as to how we do our work, and, which is why I agreed with what Director Amundson had to say in terms of letting something sit. If this is something that actually, you know, really had some time sensitivity to it, where we have to approve it tonight, then I can understand that perspective as well. But like I said, I want to just make sure that I am not faulting the principal or the parents at Longfellow or anything else, it's just a question of how we function.
Thank you. And Mr. Munoz or Ms. Adams?
Yes, I just, Longfellow's been running this calendar since 1995, and just remind the Board, this is a district-wide option, they're not forced to choose that calendar, but this is not time-sensitive. If you want to wait to vote, approve it at the next meeting, that will also work.
Ms. Nathan?
So I guess I just need some clarification. We are not approving the Longfellow date calendar in terms of what day they start and what day they end for the next three years. We are approving the structure, the concept of a flexible learning year calendar. When Longfellow calendars come up every year like we usually do, if parents have input into that piece, they will still have the opportunity to talk about that. Is that correct?
That's correct. The Board has actually already approved Longfellow's calendar for next school year at its last meeting. This is just a requirement by MDE to continue running a different calendar than the traditional calendar, and every three years, you have to get permission to do that.
And Mr. Barlow.
Yes, I initially hesitated in wanting to speak to the issue of urgency, but I so well remember, just two months ago, I'd raised the same issue of bringing something out, a briefing item, and was made aware by several that our practice perhaps has been what our practice is, what our protocols are, and I just want to speak to the fact that there's no reason to suggest ever any violation of any of our practices or policies or protocols.
Thank you. We have, the motion's been read, it's been moved and seconded. Ms. Severson, will you call the roll?
Thank you. Director Marvin.
Aye.
Director Nathan. Director Workman.
Aye.
Director Amundson.
Aye.
Director Barlow.
Aye.
Director Garcia.
Aye.
And Director McLaughlin.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes. We are on to 7.01, Approval of Cooperative Agreement. This is a briefing item. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, before I turn this over to Mark Queesley, the Activities Director from Century High School, just for the sake of the new Board Members, often during our athletics, if we do not have enough student athletes to put together a team, we may do what they call a cooperative agreement with another team in order to provide that opportunity for our students. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mark Queesley.
Good evening, Madam Chair Marvin and Members of the Board, Mr. Munoz. Before you this evening is a cooperative agreement in Boys Lacrosse for us. Currently, our numbers at John Marshall do not look like they can sustain a varsity program, even with the Rochester Lourdes students as part of that program. So within the department, we have talked, taken a look at our participation numbers between Century and Mayo, and Rochester Mayo has larger participation numbers than Century, therefore this fits with Rochester JM, Rochester Lourdes joining Century this spring in a Boys Lacrosse program. This number of students will range anywhere from five to 10 students that will be added to the Century program. As part of this, you'll notice that we have Rochester Lourdes. This was supposed to be the last year of our Lourdes co-op in Boys Lacrosse, but if we're going to start a new co-op, we have to carry it for two years. So you see a document from the Lourdes administration that they want to end this at the end of the two-year agreement. Currently, there are three students from Lourdes that are seniors this year, and there are no more students coming within the program, and Mr. Strickland from Lourdes again assures us that this co-op will end in 2022 with Lourdes, and we'll see how long we need to carry this with John Marshall until we can regain their participation numbers.
Board Members, do you have any questions for Mr. Queesley? I almost hesitate to bring this up. This too is a briefing item that, in my opinion, could be moved to action.
Yes, Madam Chair, this one is time-sensitive. We start this sport April 5th, and so I need it approved if possible to get the season started.
Thank you.
I will move this to action.
Thank you, Ms. Workman.
Second, McLaughlin.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Severson, yes, would you call the roll, please?
Thank you. Director Nathan.
Aye.
Director Workman.
Aye.
Director Amundson.
Now, now we can.
Okay. Aye.
Thank you. Director Barlow.
Aye.
Director Garcia.
Aye.
Director McLaughlin.
Aye.
And Director Marvin.
Aye. This is now an action item. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby agree to add John Marshall High School and Rochester Lourdes High School to a cooperative agreement with Century High School for Boys Lacrosse for students in grades seven through 12, beginning in 2020-2021 academic school year, and dissolving with Rochester Lourdes on concluding on June 30th, 2022.
Move approval. Workman?
Second, Garcia.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Ms. Severson, would you call the roll?
Thank you. Director Workman.
Aye.
Director Amundson.
Aye.
Director Barlow.
Aye.
Director Garcia.
Aye.
Director McLaughlin.
Aye.
Director Marvin.
Aye.
And Director Nathan.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to 7.02, Approval of Bid Packages for the Fire Alarm and Visual Notification Upgrade Projects. This is a briefing item. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at this time, I'm turning it over to Scott Sheridan, Executive Director of Operations. Scott?
Thank you, Superintendent. Good evening, Board Members. I'm here seeking approval of bid packages for the fire alarm and visual notification upgrade security systems. With me tonight, I have, from our CMA, Canuson Construction, I have Tyler Lenzner and Keon McWaters, who will be here to answer any questions that you might have about this. As you recall, the referendum included funds to install emergency notification systems that include visual notification and fire alarm upgrades as part of the security packages for all district buildings. And currently, we have the system in Bamber Valley, Franklin, ALC, Gage, and John Adams. And these bid packages, the six bid packages that were created here, include 21 more buildings that will, the system will be installed in. Fidel, JM, and Edison are planned at a later time when we do the planned IAQ or upgrades at those three buildings, and that would take care of all the buildings within the district. uh or upgrades at those three buildings, and that would take care of all the buildings within the district. On June second, twenty twenty, the board approved the I S G architects to design uh the systems. On January eleventh, six bid packages were posted and twenty-one of the uh for twenty-one of the the buildings, and these six bid packages were competitive bid. On January nineteenth, a pre-bid meeting was held for any contractor that was interested in bidding. On January twenty-eighth, two bid packages were opened and tabulated, and there were three responsible bids for both of those bid packages. And uh in the in that bid package, Accord Electric was the low responsible bid for both bid packages, numbers twenty twenty-one A and twenty twenty-two A. On February fourth, bid packages twenty twenty-one B and twenty twenty-two B were opened and tabulated. Two rebit, two responsible bids were received for both. Hunt Electric was the low responsible bid for our bid package twenty twenty-one B, and Accord Electric was the low responsible bidder for bid package twenty twenty-two B. On February eleventh, bid packages twenty twenty-one C and twenty twenty-two C were opened and tabulated. We received two responsible bids for both. Accord Electric was the low responsible bidder for both bid packages twenty twenty-one C and twenty twenty-two C. The remaining costs were part of Canuteon Construction for our CMA for general conditions. That included three hundred and sixty-two thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars. The total estimated cost for all of the bid packages and Canuteon General Conditions is four million, four hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars. Now, we anticipate there might be some cost savings here. Uh as we review the location and placement of some of the devices, we may be able to reduce uh some of the cost of this bid package, but we would bring that back in a change order. If there's any questions, we'll be willing to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions, board members? Mr. Barlow?
I've had one question regarding the uh uh your SAS and your um strobe lights. I had read, once read a study that suggested that strobe, the use of strobes for your visual indicators could potentially uh create uh seizure outcomes for some students. Is this system designed to offset that, or is an alternate type of uh visual light uh light being used?
Tyler, you want to handle that?
Um yeah, we, you know, it's a, it's it's really a code-related item. This follows suit in some of the other schools, as mentioned. I think there's five schools that uh um currently have these systems. Um the colors of those strobes are hand-selected for the purpose to help mitigate some of those, as well as color blindness. So it's, I guess I can't answer. Most buildings have some sort of a strobe system, so.
Okay, that's good enough. Thank you.
Thank you. And Scott, is it likely that any of the numbers or situations here are going to change at all?
If anything, we're hoping to reduce what this budget is.
Okay, but I mean, uh for for the resolution that we have in front of us, this, you're ready to go with this?
We are. We're actually on a time-sensitive uh schedule for this one. Uh there is a lead time to get all the equipment, get them in place, and uh these are all planned to be installed this summer.
Okay.
I'd like to move this to action. Workman?
Thank you. Ms. Workman has moved it to action. Is there a second?
Second, Barlow.
Thank you, Mr. Barlow. Um any discussion? Ms. Iverson, will you call the roll?
Thank you. Director Amundson?
Aye.
Director Barlow?
Aye.
Director Garcia?
Aye.
Director McLaughlin?
Aye.
Director Marvin?
Aye.
Director Nathan?
Aye.
And Director Workman?
Aye.
Thank you.
It's an action item. Be it resolved, School Board of Independent School District five thirty-five does hereby accept the responsible competitive bids for Accord Electric for work described in bid packages two oh two one A, two oh two one C, two oh two two A, two oh two two B, and two oh two two C, for a total of three million, one hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. And Hunt Electric for a work described in bid package two oh two one B for a total of nine hundred and twenty-three thousand, three hundred dollars. Be it further resolved, the School Board of Independent School District five thirty-five does hereby approve the Canuteon General Conditions for this general conditions for the sum of three hundred and sixty-two thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars, per total cost of four million, four hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars.
Move approval? Workman?
Second, Nathan?
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Ms. Iverson, will you call the roll?
Thank you. Director Barlow?
Aye.
Director Garcia?
Aye.
Director McLaughlin?
Aye.
Director Marvin?
Aye.
Director Nathan?
Aye.
Director Workman?
Aye.
And Director Amundson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion is approved. Seven point oh three, we're doing a lot of building tonight. Um approval of proposal for the furniture packages for the referendum new school, new schools. This is a briefing item. Mr. Munoz?
Yeah, Mr. Sheridan, Executive Director of Operations, will brief us on this agenda item as well. Scott?
Thank you, Superintendent. Good evening again, board members. I'm here tonight seeking approval of the furniture proposal package for the new middle school and the three new elementary schools. As you know, on December tenth, twenty nineteen, the school board approved the hiring of L H B C R W to design all these schools. And L H B created a, during the design phase, L H B created a furniture committee that was formed that included district staff and the the design team. Representatives from special ed, elementary administration, secondary administration, and curriculum and instruction were all included in this furniture committee. An invitation was sent out to two preferred vendors to gather competitive prices, and these were blind rated by the committee utilizing several factors. Uh one was brand preference, such as Steelcase versus Han, and other was geographical location of uh the vendors in order to provide the service that we need to get them done. In the end, the furniture committee recommended Schmidt Goodman, which was identified as the preferred option and was within the project budget. And they also happened to provide the overall lowest package price. Uh this particular furniture package uh is something that's on our national purchasing cooperative joint powers contract, which means that we could just go out and hire them to to do the furniture package for us, whoever we chose off this competitive joint powers agreement. But we decided to do it a little more competitively. That's why we invited both vendors and blind rated them and chose one that we felt was best. So the total furniture package per school includes furniture installation and freight costs. And Schmidt Goodman's bid for the twenty nineteen elementary school, which is now called Overland, is seven hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars and twenty-six cents. And for the new Harriet Bishop building, eight hundred and one thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty-six cents. And for the Longfellow Elementary, seven hundred and sixty-three thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixty-two cents. And for the new middle school, one million, fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars and eighty-two cents, for a total of three million, three hundred and ninety-six thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars, and of course, twenty-six cents. If there's any questions, I'll try to answer them for you.
I just wonder if you could talk them down about twenty-six cents. Um Ms. Nathan, Ms. Nathan apparently is also concerned about the twenty-six cents.
I I am glad I don't have to read those numbers tonight. Um Mr. Sheridan, the um proposal gave some really great visuals about what the classrooms would look like. And the only thing I noticed is that there didn't seem to be a lot of storage units or spaces included, at least in the furniture. And I know teachers I talked to are always looking for for storage spaces. Is that covered under something else, or is it built into the construction of the of the classrooms, or how are we addressing that?
That's an excellent question. I don't know if I have an answer for you on that. Uh I don't know if Keon could answer that too, based on the design of the buildings, if there's uh storage already built into the classrooms or not. But I could find an answer out for you if I, if Keon doesn't have the answer.
I can jump in if I'm allowed.
Sure, Keon.
Uh so there are storage rooms in each of the classroom wings, and depending on grade level, the size does vary a little bit, but then the uh cabinetry would be a different set of um different package. So it's not included within the furniture, but there is additional storage within the building.
Thank you, Keon.
You bet.
Other questions, board members? And uh Mr. Sheridan, how much is there any urgency in getting this passed? There's that question, and Ms. McLaughlin has one.
Yes, there is, because there's again some lead time involved here as well. We need the furniture arrived for the Overland School to be able to open in the fall.
Okay. Ms. McLaughlin?
And this is maybe a little along the environmental side and being new. Uh the two schools that are being rebuilt, what happens to all the furniture and items inside there now? Are, do those get reused in the district and and rather than just tossing them away?
That's an excellent question. We plan to have a fire sale-type thing where all the other administrators from the other buildings are allowed to walk through uh Bishop and Longfellow. And of course, the current administration can take what they want first, but then uh the other administrators can walk through and take what they want as well uh out of the buildings to repurpose them at their, at their buildings. We, yeah, we plan to do the Harriet Bishop one uh the first, or the second week of June. And then for Longfellow would be um once we get their building complete, so the spring of twenty-two. The same process for you.
Ms. Workman?
Um yes, just off of what um Director McLaughlin said, if there are any items that aren't claimed by other people in the district, will you be offering them to the public for sale?
Potentially, yeah. The um we do have some storage capability in one of our buildings. It's not very good. It's not conditioned air, but uh and some of it is old that we're going to get actually just throw away. But yes, if there's anything of value, we do uh offer things on public surplus on occasion. It's a lot of our equipment.
Thank you. I'd like to move this item to action if there are no other questions.
Second, McLaughlin.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to action. Any discussion? Ms. Iverson, will you call the roll?
Thank you. Director Garcia?
Aye.
Director McLaughlin?
Aye.
Director Marvin?
Aye.
Director Nathan?
Aye.
Director Workman?
Aye.
Director Amundson?
Aye.
Director Barlow?
Aye.
Thank you.
This is an action item. Be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District five thirty-five does hereby approve the purchase, installation, and freight cost bid from Schmidt Goodman for the twenty nineteen elementary school, now known as Overland, the twenty nineteen middle school, and the new Harriet Bishop and Longfellow elementary schools in the amount of three million, three hundred and ninety-six thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars and twenty-six cents.
Move approval? Workman?
Second, Garcia.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Ms. Iverson, would you call the roll?
Director McLaughlin?
Aye.
Director Marvin?
Aye.
Director Nathan?
Aye.
Director Workman?
Aye.
Director Amundson?
Aye.
Director Barlow?
Aye.
And Director Garcia?
Aye.
Thank you.
Seven point oh four, approval of alternate for additional classrooms at New Bishop Elementary School. This is a briefing item. Mr. Munoz?
Yes, Mr. Sheridan, Executive Director of Operations, will brief us on this uh agenda item. Scott?
Thank you, Superintendent. Good evening again, board members. For the third time, I'm seeking approval of alternate one for the additional two classrooms at the new Harriet Bishop Elementary School. If you remember, on February second, twenty twenty-one, we brought to the school board bid package number one that had twenty-eight trade packages and five best value packages. And we pulled off the HVAC and plumbing at that time, but we also talked about alternate one. And as part of the document was noted, that alternate one, uh the two extra classrooms for Harriet Bishop would be decided at a later date and that would be basically determined based on budget. On February sixteenth, we brought the HVAC and plumbing back, and you approved that. And tonight, we're bringing back alternate one. Uh Canuteon Construction, our CMA, has done uh all the cost estimating and the budget controls, and they feel that uh alternate one can be approved if the board so chooses and still fall within budget. Uh alternate one does include the construction of two additional classrooms for special programming at the new Harriet Bishop School. And the cost of this alternate one is estimated to be two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars. And I have Keon McWaters with me from Canuteon as well, if there's any questions regarding this particular uh board doc.
Ms. Workman?
Okay, um yes, I I'm assuming that this alternate one was, has, was part of the original plan, and you're just wait, you would just wanted to see if the budget would um accommodate that. Is is that my, is that correct? I see Keon in.
Yep, you're correct.
Not ink. Okay, and then the second question is um perhaps better answered by the superintendent. And what is the purpose of these two classrooms for special programs? And if these two classrooms have, had not been built, where would those programs live?
Well, I can, Julie, you're you're probably more familiar than anybody. Over the years, we've always talked about how our special ed numbers continue to grow. And this is, they they probably won't be used that first year that it's built, but we do, you know, this allows us, as those programs grow, we have space uh to allow that to grow.
Okay, it said special programs, and I I wasn't sure if that was special ed or special something else.
Yes, special.
Not every kid is special, I know that. Okay, thank you.
And Ms. Amundson, did you have a question? No.
It was covered by Director.
Oh, good. Okay, good enough. Um this is also a briefing item. And I'm assuming, Mr. Sheridan, that there's some urgency in this one as well.
Yeah, this is a time-sensitive issue as well.
I'd like to move this to action since we don't have twenty-six cents on the end of that number.
Second, Garcia.
It's been moved and seconded to move this to action. Ms. Iverson, will you call the roll?
Director Marvin?
Aye.
Director Nathan?
Aye.
Director Workman?
Aye.
Director Amundson?
Aye.
Director Barlow?
Aye.
Director Garcia?
Aye.
And Director McLaughlin?
Aye.
Thank you.
It's an action item. Be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District five thirty-five does hereby approve alternate number one from bid package number one in the amount of two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars for the construction of two additional classrooms at the new Harriet Bishop Elementary School.
Move approval? Workman?
Okay, Amundson.
Been moved and seconded. Ms. Iverson, would you call the roll?
Director Nathan?
Aye.
Director Workman?
Aye.
Director Amundson?
Aye.
Director Barlow?
Aye.
Director Garcia?
Aye.
Director McLaughlin?
Aye.
And Director Marvin?
Aye. Motion passes. Seven point oh five, referendum update. This is a briefing item on the pool projects. Mr. Munoz?
Yes, uh tonight, we have Scott Sheridan. Yes, uh tonight we have Scott Sheridan, Executive Director of Operations, John Carlson, Executive Director of Finance. We have representatives from our W S H design team and Knutson Construction. And just before I turn over to Scott, I just, you know, we're we're very fortunate to have such an amazing team working on this project and uh as a superintendent, I have total confidence in their ability to uh build this and design us a really nice pool. So I'm gonna turn this over to Scott.
Thank you, Superintendent. Good evening again, board members. This is an update on the pool referendum projects. A brief background is on January 7th, 2020, you approved the hiring of Knutson Construction as the CMA for the pool projects, among other projects. On January 28th, 2020, you approved the hiring of W S N Architects and their design team to design the new pool at Century, the upgrades to the Mayo High School pool, and the decommissioning of the pool at Will Creek, John Adams and Kellogg. We've been providing you updates um many times since that time. Uh we did pause the design of the uh pool for a while because we felt that uh it the projects, the three projects were underfunded and we wanted to wait to see until we had uh bid packs from at least two of the schools back or more in order to determine uh if there were any uh any of those projects came in under budget and then we could apply those funds uh to the pool projects. As of tonight, we have a a number, uh a budget number that uh we feel that we can support uh for all these projects. Uh and Knutson Construction will get into that and explain that to you. On February 16th and March 2nd, the School Board uh was provided conceptual designs by W S N, Dana Liebchuk and his group for the planned pool at Century High School. We've had numerous uh meetings uh since the hiring of W S N. And uh like the superintendent said tonight, uh we have John Carlson here to answer any funding questions. Uh Keon McWaters, Delbert Feenstra, Tyler Lenzner from Knutson. Uh Delbert's the cost estimator and you know Keon and I believe you know Tyler already. And of course, I believe you know Dana Liebchuk from W S N. He's with us here tonight as well. And I I just want to reiterate what the superintendent, the comments he made, and I appreciate what he said, but I do have just a couple of comments. Uh this design process for all these projects has been a pretty interesting journey. There's a very passionate pool community, which is wonderful, and uh they're very passionate about their pools, which is great. The group that we've assembled here that I think uh they're very dedicated, skilled, and experienced. Um they have been committed to their work. They remain professional even when working to correct some misinformation about the work being done. Uh they're really very diligent and uh dive into the details to be sure that they're being accurate, and I believe they have a complete uh amount of integrity as well. And collectively, you know, I work with a lot of different groups uh in the years I've been here, our construction services division and facilities have, and I think that collectively this is one of the finest group of professionals. Got to listen to the community that have addressed concerns, work together uh in a lot of different difficult situations, uh on a limited budget, try to find more dollars through these projects, and are trying to do what's best for all the students in the group. And since January 28th, when you approved the hiring of W S N, we've tried to follow what you approved at that time, which was to build a pool at Century, upgrade Mayo High School, including the dive well compliance and the repurposing of the three middle schools. And like I said, we expanded that budget and regularly updated you along the way. And we feel we've designed fiscally but fiscally responsible pool projects that fit within the new budget and the voter approved referendum. And like I said, the times that meet the needs of all students in our district. I just wanted to make those comments that how much I appreciate working with this particular group. So we're here for your questions and and we're hoping there will be a few. And like I said, we have a great group here that can answer your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Sheridan, and I I have to reiterate what both you and the superintendent said. Scott, you and this entire team, I have been unbelievably impressed with your fiscal responsibility, with your attention to detail, with the expertise, the depth of expertise on uh projects that are this specific. Um I I I think that this district is incredibly fortunate to have this group um working on these projects and um I I just really want to thank you. I you've put in a huge amount of work for this and uh I know that you feel the responsibility to all the members and all the families and all the students of this district. So thank you for for your work and your expertise. Um board members, do you have questions or comments? Ms. Nathan.
Um well, I guess I'll go to the um document that's new or the two new documents that I don't know that we've seen before as a board. Um the referendum budget summary um that gives us um the estimated budgets for the projects currently defined. And I'm wondering, is Keon gonna run through those or um is that is that okay to ask?
Yes, it is. Um we didn't have a formal presentation planned. Um we're happy to go through those numbers. I'd actually probably turn it over to Delbert to do. Um but I can kind of summarize. So you're seeing the the first two columns is the Century Pool Edition for the eight lane and then the Century Locker Rooms. That's what we're considering, the entire Century addition. Uh it's broke out that way just because it fits better into our estimating software. Um but that is, you gotta total those two columns up to get the Century Pool Edition and then I think the uh last columns, the Mayo High School Pool Upgrades and the Middle School Decommissioning Numbers kind of speak for themselves, but um Delbert can kind of talk through those at high level and then maybe how it ties into the second attachment that we included tonight.
So we'll just sort of work uh top to bottom uh on this, uh starting at that construction cost line. So in the in the two columns for the Century Pool Edition, the 5.4 million roughly and the 1. you know, just shy of 2 million for the locker rooms. Um there's a whole nother level of detail behind those two numbers where I've actually quantified all the concrete, the steel, uh the pre-cast, the pool itself, the seating, the mechanical systems. That that's how we arrive at the at those construction cost numbers, right? And and you're really um with this document, seeing a lot about how the sausage is made versus, you know, just giving you the sausage like we typically do. Um on top of those numbers, we we carry contingencies because we're only partway through the design process on this. And as we as we move through uh the design process, just as we did with the the three elementary schools and the middle school, um that construction contingency line will stay at 3%. The estimating of design contingency will be reduced to zero. Uh we typically will go into bid day with about 2% on that line, just to make sure we can absorb any um unforeseen bidding scenarios that might crop up. As we continue to move down the sheet, uh we have our general conditions line item. That's um you've approved those on the other schools and you just did on the visual notification. That's the um uh things like site fences and 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 the job trailer and uh portable toilets for, you know, and and site security and 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 the list goes on. Um that's in that general conditions line item, also winter conditions, you know, that uh will be incurred, temporary heating and those sorts of things is in there. Next comes this construction management fee. That's a fixed percentage based on project cost that was approved with our contract previously. Uh the design fees, those are percentages that W S N gets paid that are based on project cost. The builder's risk insurance, the 0.07%, that's something that the district pays um to the insurance company, but we keep track of it as a project cost. General liability is blank because in the in the case of the Century Edition, it's rolled into the $900,000 general condition. In the other two, they're not as further along in the process, so that remains as a separate item. Um PIF fees, uh since these are all existing structures, there's no point, that's a that's a fee that the city charges, uh the plant improvement fee. So that's why that's zero across the board. Uh building permits, you know, the all projects got to have building permits. Abatement and sewer access and water access, again, these are existing structures and they're relatively new. Um no, no costs there. There is a development pro uh fee um that changes names, that's a city fee. Uh they did they uh some it's it's sometimes referred to as a stormwater management fee or a development fee or a um what's the other third name I've heard it called? Um it it runs about a half a percent depending on the project size, so that's where we're carrying some money there. Um and then we have some other things, special inspection and testing and commissioning. Those are services that are that are hired out and bid separately of the of the construction project itself from third-party um testing firms to make sure your building is operating the way it's supposed to when we get done building it. Then we get uh to the FFNE line items and the technology line items. Those things are um kind of like what you just approved for the Schmidt Goodman bid. You know, there's going to be furniture and and the scoreboard and desks and um um some of the toilet accessories that you have through your master contracts and that kinds of things will come out of those numbers. Um let's see, wireless access points, those kinds of things will come out of the technology, whether other devices that might be used in the addition. Um and that gets us down to the bottom for our estimated project cost, and you can see the difference to the referendum amount. To try and make summarize things a little bit, I added a line um at the bottom, the the as shared, uh eight lane pool design with locker rooms um that you've that you've seen at the last board meeting, it's 10,230. And then the total cost for all of the projects is just shy of 15,2. Now, there were some uh concerns raised about um accuracy of numbers and how does this compare to other projects? Well, maybe I should ask if there's any questions on this before I move on to that.
Uh Ms. Workman, you have a question?
Yes. Can you hear me?
I can.
Yes. Okay, I was looking at the um the attachment. So my question is on uh I believe it's attachment B, there's a different total cost number. Is that just for the pool or does that include all of the locker room and are both of these um attachments simply for the original design as planned and not for the stretch pool?
None of this is regarding, none of this is for the stretch pool. We don't have a design for the stretch pool.
Okay. I I figured probably not, so that total.
Not sure who pulled up this attachment for me. If you could pull up the other attachment.
Yeah.
All right, and very good. All right, so um the reason you're seeing a difference, so it it um it's important to note that this is just comparing construction costs, right? So from the slide that was up there previously, we have to add the 5.4 million dollars and and the 2 million dollars.
So that 7.4 you're seeing, Julie, that is?
Transfers directly from the other page.
Okay.
Reason I'm doing that, um yeah, if you see right there at the top, the 5436081 and the 198412, you add those two together and you get the 7.4. The reason I'm doing that on this attachment B is because um all of the stuff below that number on the previous sheet.
Mm-hmm.
Different from district to district to district and design teams and construction managers, and and I don't know what those costs are on these other projects. I only know what what the bid amounts were approved as they were um read in their board documents and and videos.
Okay.
So to try to make sure that I'm comparing everything on the same level, I'm comparing construction cost across the board.
So so the um the comparison page then is so that we are comparing apples to apples?
Correct.
And that explains um the difference in the two numbers. Okay, thank you very much. I have very much appreciate that clarification. I will put my hand down when I can find it.
So eh. Yes, Ms. Nathan.
Oh, go ahead, Kathy.
I was gonna ask Delbert to continue with the chart that's on the page.
Perfect, all right. Wasn't sure if anyone would have any other questions about the previous page. Um so so what we're looking at here is I did digging into um three other schools that have been brought up as comparisons and and sort of tried to outline what they are, what type of construction they were, when they were built, sizes and construction costs. An important thing to remember is that um inflation is a is a real thing, an escalation, it's called in the construction business. Um so the the projects that were bid in 2019, uh the according to the Turner Construction Cost Index, which is a um sort of the benchmark to help help estimators like myself figure that out, um from 19 to 20 was a 2% escalation. Um I'm assuming from 20 to 21, another 2% escalation. And the uh that's just a guess. The their first quarterly report won't be out until the end of this month. Um I would uh like to point out that just just in the in the in the bids I've been receiving, um steel is up 30 to 35%, lumber's up 35 to 40%. Uh PVC PVC materials, um depending on the size of the pipe that you buy, you know, that's used for plumbing and electrical, is up 50 to 60%. Um and and um in addition to the cost increases, there are um extended lead times and material shortages. So not only is the PV that's part of what's driving the cost up, like the PVC um for for several months, you couldn't buy 3/4 inch PVC, nobody nobody had it. And now it now that they do have it um back, it's 50 to 60% more. So we have to add for escalation, gets us um to uh a point where we can compare project to project. Um so if we start, so the first column is the Century School and our current projected construction cost. The second is what's referred to as the Sibley Pool. It's built for um District 197. It's located in Mindota Heights. It's the the 25 yard stretch pool. It's a um bigger building, it's a bigger pool. That pool is actually 47 feet longer um than the current 75 or yeah, 25 yard pool we have I pulled the uh cost information from that, from their board documents, and you see that summarized there in my notes as to when they were bid and and where I got that from. Um one way, one of the design feat things that that was pointed out on that was that they squeezed the the dimensions from the, say, the outside walls to the pool edge itself down in order to keep the footprint smaller to keep costs down. That was something that was noted that they had done. Um the Century Middle School in Lakeville was just bid this last fall. Um that's sort of a different animal compared to what we've been pricing for Century High School for Rochester. Um it has two separate bodies of water, one for slap swimming, one for diving. Um it's it's quite a bit larger um per square footage wise. And um uh you can see that reflected in in the cost of the project. The final school there, the Edred Middle School in New Brighton, that is um the pool itself is the same. It's the 25 yard eight lane pool um with two diving boards. The construction costs there, I I wasn't able to, that pool was built uh or bid in 2018, or pulled those construction costs from, we got an email from the project manager with Gross Anderson, who's the construction manager on that project for the 6.3 million. Again, we have to escalate it. That one's coming in cheaper because there are some some key differences about that particular project. They had existing um locker room space and building space that they could renovate into the new lockers um for the pool area, so they're they don't have any structure or footings or foundations or earthwork or anything, any of that work associated with actually building a structure to house that piece. Um none of these pools um have have the storm shelter component in them. That is, that became a building code requirement in April. That is, that became a building code requirement in April of this past year, 2020. I'm wrong in that Dana, correct me please. But the Century project bid in 20, but when it was going through the approval process, it was before the new building code had gone into effect, is my understanding. So they don't have to have the storm shelter requirement, that adds cost. So, so you can see that, that how this, the, the, some of the things that were thrown out there that other districts are building far larger buildings and far, and, and bigger pools for the same money or less money, it just isn't accurate. So, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about this slide as well.
I have a question for Mr. Munoz or John Carlson about the funding. The referendum question about pools provided about $9.5 million. Right now, we're looking at with just what's been shown about $15 million. Already, the referendum money isn't enough to cover the difference. So where does that extra four-plus million dollars come from?
John, do you want to talk about the funding sources?
Sure. Well, first, maybe Keon could just update us. I, I believe what we have going on here is we also have savings that we've accumulated on Overland, the new middle school, Bishop and Longfellow bids.
So I. Correct. If you don't mind, I'll jump in there.
Go ahead, thanks.
So we, we mentioned this a little bit before. This, this whole pool discussion and design of the pool projects was put on hold almost a year ago now because we knew based on preliminary numbers that we weren't, that the $9.5 million wasn't going to get it done. And that we would have to see what was left from designing the schools. If, to see if there would be any money left from designing the three elementary schools and the middle school and building those to supplement the $9.5 million to make the pools as we understood them happen. So we did work hard over the summer and during the design process with LHB to make choices about, I'll say, building amenities. We didn't sacrifice any classroom space, we didn't sacrifice program space, we didn't affect any of that stuff. We, we, you know, we have polished concrete instead of terrazzo in some areas. We have slightly smaller windows that really no one's going to notice because if it's an eight-foot tall window or if it's a seven-foot-six tall window, most people don't pick that up just by looking at it. And if I hadn't told you, you'd have never known they were different. But, you know, saving that little bit of glass actually saved us quite a bit of money as we worked our way around the building and across all the schools. So by making, I'll say, cost-saving decisions or economical decisions about the designs of the elementary schools and the middle school, we were able to bring those projects in under budget and shift some money from them to the bottom line to be used for the pools. Hopefully that's making sense to everyone.
I would like to point out that, and I know Delbert won't point it out, but Delbert does the estimating for Knutson Construction and he does it for many, many projects and has done it for many years and for a lot of our projects as well. And when you can have $180 million referendum and he can predict the budget within 1 or 2%, I just think that's phenomenal. And he has a track record of accuracy that goes back for years. I know he's not going to toot his own horn, but I'm going to because it's just remarkable to see how spot-on he is when he provides his estimates as we go along in these projects.
And I think the other part of your question may have been, so where do we get more money if even all that we've saved so far isn't enough? We could go down the path of issuing what's called certificates of participation. There'd be no levy authority for that. We'd have to commit to making the payment out of our general fund on a year-to-year basis. So we can look at whatever dollar amount we need and, and basically go get a loan for it above and beyond what we've already borrowed.
Thank you. Ms. Amundson and then Ms. Nathan.
Just to make sure I'm understanding this and maybe to help other people understand it if, if I am understanding it. A big part of the Mayo Pool number is HVAC. And HVAC was not in the original calculations when we went out for the referendum, at least not to that extent. Is that true? Is that part of the reason that the, the projections are the size that they are?
Yes.
I can't speak to what was developed to run a referendum. I wasn't on that team to develop the number that went out for that. The current budget, yes. Approximately $3 million of that number is the HVAC system, it's not quite that much. There's some stuff to move around, but for, for discussion's sake today, $3 million of the 3.8 on that sheet is, is HVAC upgrades. The, the study that WSN did found that the, the systems were in, in really bad shape and not, you know, there's, there's no current dehumidification in the space. The, the systems are nearing the end of their life and need to be upgraded.
Ms. Nathan.
So to build on the question that Director Marvin asked, if I look at the budget summary sheet and it says the total cost for all pool projects is $15,199,336 as they're currently scoped out. I'm hearing that we currently have enough money in the budget from the original referendum dollars and the savings from the other building to cover that 15 million number, is that correct?
Yeah, I think we're sitting at about, correct me if I'm wrong Keon, $300,000 to the good right now as far as bottom dollars. You know, you approved the $180 million total. And with all of the projects with these numbers included in there, we're at 177, no.
179, 700.
There you go, thank you.
I'm sorry, can I ask one more question? So then when I look at the pool comparisons between the Century current design, which is the eight-lane 25-yard compared to a eight-line 25-yard stretch, the difference in budget for that Century pool would be about $4.5 million? Is that what I'm seeing under best estimate? We won't know for sure until we have a design and, and actual bids.
Correct, that's if, you know, if we were to identically replicate Sibley. I know that just from, I've looked at that Sibley plan a little bit. They had, there will be some differences I just picked up on right away. You know, they had a, they had a elevator in that project. If we, if we do an elevator, then yeah, we could, we would be higher. If we sort of use our current design where we're just using a wheelchair lift to get to the lower level of seating, then we don't have to add that probably $200,000-ish for an elevator and a shaft and all that stuff. There could be, you know, other savings like that until we actually design it, you know. We won't know for sure if we'd be under or right at that number. We have, we have done some sort of napkin sketches and talking on the side, anticipating a question like that. And we're coming in about that, about that number currently. But until we actually get another, a little further down the design and I can actually quantify, like I said, the concrete and the steel and that stuff, the number isn't firm at this point.
Ms. McLaughlin.
I apologize if I missed this earlier, but what is the number of the savings so far from the other schools?
Good question. We've actually tallied the whole thing.
I can do that here quickly, I think.
And really sad that I've stumped some numbers people, sorry.
It's roughly $5 million, ballpark number.
Thank you.
So, I'm sure that there are more questions here, board members, but the, the issue we have in front of us right now, we have two resolutions. One of them is to go with the plan that we currently have in front of us. Build the 25-yard pool at Century. Work on the Mayo Pool, decommission the middle school pools. The other is to build the 25-yard stretch pool at Century, which is what the swimming community wanted. The messaging we got was that Mayo, the Mayo Pool is just old and they're not at all confident that even after it gets repaired, that it's going to last for a very long time. It will not, never be a real competitive pool. There just isn't room in it for, much in the way of viewership. I don't know if that's a sports word, but room for people to watch competitions. So the other suggestion is to build a 25-yard stretch at Century, do very little at Mayo, starting blocks and that's about it. And still reconfigure the middle school pools, but use the savings from Century to help pay for the additional, I'm sorry, save the savings from the Mayo project to pay for a bigger, better pool at Century. And Ms. Nathan and then Ms. Workman.
So in the feedback that we received from the pool community and their support of a eight-lane stretch 25 pool and their support of doing minimal upgrades at Mayo, but hearing what I've heard about the air quality at the Mayo Pool, I'm wondering if someone could talk about whether there are alternative financing options outside of the referendum where, that we can look at that HVAC air quality issue for the Mayo Pool.
Yes, I can address that, yeah, there is. You know, if the board decide, would decide to do that second resolution, then we could come back at a later date and show a different funding source where we could address the HVAC issue at the Mayo Pool. So we do have different funding sources. John, if you want to talk about what, what our options might be?
Sure, there's two that I can think of right away. That'd be the long-term facility maintenance on the pay-as-you-go levy, just our year-to-year 10-year plan, which is one of the items we postponed tonight. The other would be we could issue facilities maintenance bonds, which we do that every other year anyway. So on our next issue, we could add a little bit more to that or we could reprioritize other projects. I, I believe there would be a way to make it happen.
But I do need to, I do need to point out.
Oh, go ahead Scott.
I do need to point out, John is correct. We are very limited however on our long-term facility maintenance revenue. So John and I haven't really talked, but my preference would be to do the facilities maintenance bonds versus tack it onto our LTFM. But we cannot use LTFM dollars to do anything to increase the dive well. MDE has strictly said that we can't use those dollars for it. So if we did the dive well in addition, that would have to come out of the referendum dollars.
Thank you. Ms. Workman.
Yes, I'd like to know, do we have any input from our high school coaches, particularly the one at Mayo High School, who would be most affected by this? That's number one. And number two is, how imminent would the HVAC system need to be fixed? I mean, are we talking several years out?
I'll address the first part. There was, at our meeting Thursday, the Mayo, there was a Mayo swim coach there. I don't know if he was the girls' or boys' swim coach, but he was there. As far as the HVAC, based on what I heard at that meeting Thursday, I would say it's something we would want to address fairly soon. I wouldn't want to push it out to, you know, a few years down, down the road. I don't know if you have anything else to add to that Scott?
Yeah, thank you Superintendent. We did hear about the HVAC concern as the air quality. We heard about this about a year ago as well and that's why we were focusing on the HVAC. We asked our engineer and Dana and his group to look into it. And they determined what they found, like Delbert talked about, the issues with the HVAC. What you have is an antiquated system that's not producing enough fresh air and pulling out the, the bad air. So the chloramines are collecting above the water. And the coach talked about how his eyes get irritated and gets a headache if he's in there and the pool's being actively used. And he expressed that a year ago. And so that was obviously a concern. They did have a mitigation effort in place where they had to open doors and run fans in order to mitigate the issue. And he did express it again last Thursday as well. And it was a priority topic, at least for a while, to do the HVAC right away from, from the group. Like I said, it would be an extensive project. And we were figuring once, if we were going to do the dive well, we would have to go into the ceiling anyway. That's where all the duck work is. And it's your perfect opportunity to take care of all those issues. In addition to the HVAC, you have the pool filtration system and the chemical part of the pool that's, needs to be replaced as well in order to maintain that. So there's a lot of things that would still need to be do, done to the Mayo Pool in order to make it safe for the students that are using it, the staff that are using it, even if it's for FIAID purposes or for practice for the swim team for Mayo.
Julie, to answer your question, the coaches at the, at all three of our high schools preferred having, leaving Mayo as-is and doing a bigger pool at Century, the 25 stretch there. And agreed that they would, right now, you can't do diving at the Mayo Pool. It's John Marshall. So then they would have diving at John Marshall and at Century.
Okay, thank you, that helped. I'd like to take this opportunity to, to thank our, our teams, our team members who've been working with Scott and John on all of this and for the very detailed information that you've provided for us. I found it particularly helpful in informing my decision, so thank you.
I would just add one thing, just so for those maybe who are watching, if the board does choose to go that route, both Mayo and Century would use the Century Pool for their competition. So they would have to work out their schedule that they're not both having a, a home meet at the same night. So that would basically come the competition pool for the two high schools and then Mayo would be used just for practicing.
Is Mayo being used, Mayo's not being used for competition now, is it?
Yeah, it has been, except, except for the diving. The diving has, right now, all the diving competition has to go to John Marshall.
Okay.
Other questions?
One thing I wanted to mention.
Go ahead Delbert.
I just wanted to make sure everyone realizes that if, if we keep the million dollars set aside for the middle school decommissioning, that only leaves us 14.1 for Century. And sort of comparing to the Sibley again, because that's my, that's what I've got to compare since I don't have a design, it, it leaves us, that leaves you a little bit short. We either gotta change the design and, and design to the 14.1 or, or find some other money or something, right? It, it doesn't leave, it doesn't make you whole.
For the Century Pool.
Correct.
Board members, I'm, I don't know at this point if you are ready to vote on either resolution. I don't think anything is going to change. Construction's just going to keep getting more expensive. I don't think anything is going to change. Certainly the coaches' opinions about what they'd prefer, we already know. We know the swimming community's a strong opinion about what they prefer. We know that we have a lot of swimmers in Rochester.
I'd like to make a motion, Director Marvin.
Go ahead.
I'd like to move that the School Board of Independent School District 535 approves the pool decommissioning work. the pool decommissioning work plan for the pools at Willow Creek Middle School, Kellogg Middle School, and John Adams Middle School, a plan to design an eight-lane stretch pool with a bulkhead at Century High School, and reject the plan to upgrade the Mayo High School Pool Plan to deepen the dive well and upgrade the HVAC system.
I will second that.
Yeah, it, it just was. No, it's fine. Sorry. No, it's, it's absolutely okay to make a motion at this point. It doesn't have to be moved to action. So, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Ms. Amundson?
Is it necessary at this point to include the decommissioning in order to move ahead? And the reason I ask that is because if there's any question about what's going to happen with the Mayo Pool, it seems to me that we might want to hang on to one of the middle school pools as backup. I know there's no way to predict whether that's going to happen, but I'm just wondering if it wouldn't make more sense to, to do this a little more slowly and step by step rather than sinking everything in at once.
The plan all along would be to do it as phased, Ms. Amundson, so that the existing pools wouldn't be taken offline until the new pool is done. So, you're now, you're never, that's, that's been our plan all along. The decommissioning actually wouldn't happen on our current schedule till next summer, and now if you move forward with this, read this stretch design, which will push things a little bit, maybe the decommissioning doesn't happen until summer of '23 potentially, depending, you know, we wouldn't take those offline until you had more pool space available.
Any other discussion about the motion?
I think it's important to hear from Dana from WSN regarding some of this. He hasn't spoken up at an opportunity, but he's the lead designer on this and would be the responsible party for it. I think it's important that we hear from Dana.
It's a good idea. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Scott. We did address, I don't think it's been mentioned yet, but we did address the, the swim community along with the swim coaches, several RPS staff, as well as some board members last Thursday. I think it's been mentioned briefly through this discussion. And you're right, the outstanding support for the eight-lane stretch was evident with the swim community as well as with the coaches, and this has been kind of in the back of our minds this, this entire time as we've been going through the design process. Early in the programming phases, even a year ago, last March and last January, some of the wants and needs identified by the swim community included, as far as, included a 10-lane pool with a separate dive well. So, this isn't, the addition of an eight-lane stretch is, is actually compromised from the original wants and needs of the swim community. And in, in working with our consultants, US Aquatics, they, they've made it very clear, you know, this is the direction of multiple pools that are being built in Minnesota, and it's, it's the direction that they recommended as well. So, we're not going outside of the norms, and I think you're aware of that. We're not going outside of the norms by building an eight-lane stretch. We'd be satisfying the, the needs of the swim community, both the recreational community as well as the high schools to proceed in that direction. So, you have the support of not only the swim community, but as well as the consultants, Canute's and Construction, as well as Windset, the architects, to move in that direction.
Thank you, and we understand that this would require a new design, which is going to cost some money and will delay construction somewhat, you know, if we do decide to go this route. I'm wondering too, that if we do determine to build the stretch pool, if there are, I don't want to say bells and whistles, because I know they don't have those in pools, but are there any way to make, to make it less expensive, I mean, do a quality pool but not provide all of the extras at this point, things that could be added later?
Sure, sure. And actually, let's, let's chat about the, the schedule and where we're at right now. Our team has actually completed, we're about 90% complete with the first bid package for the eight-lane pool. And when we took a deep look, I wanted to say deep dive, when we took a deep look into the.
Don't do that, yeah.
Into the, into the design, we actually, we determined that the, the size of the natatorium required for an eight-lane stretch is the exact footprint required for natatorium and locker rooms that you've been seeing during the design process. So, that north-south design on Century, where you saw the locker rooms and then the natatorium going north, that shape is the same size as an eight-lane stretch pool. So, then what my team did is we took the required locker rooms, storm shelter, and exiting out of, out of the corridors, and we moved those to the north side of the existing gymnasium, and just doing a quick exercise, we found that we could increase the size of the, the school and be very efficient with this pool addition to wrap around the north side of the existing gymnasium and have minimal impact to the site going to the north, because I know that was important with the current athletic fields on the north side. But minimize the impact to the site, to the drive, to the utilities. There's, there's a lot of things that are impacted back there, and so when we did some quick sketches, we found that we could be very efficient, keeping a lot of the similar design characteristics that we have with the first design with the eight-lane, and keep that with an eight-lane stretch and be efficient with our dollars. So, you talk about bells and whistles. The design is exactly the same, the panel design, the exterior design is the same. We're simply moving the, the locker rooms to the north side of the existing, existing gymnasium, and then keeping the design consistent and keeping it very simple. So, we, yeah, we've, we've looked at that, we've taken that into account as we move into this, into this possible phase.
Mr. Munoz? Thank you.
Yeah, I, I would also add, I, I had the, I was fortunate enough to speak to one of the board members from, that was on the board at Lakeview when they built their pool, and they ran into the same situation we did, but he said that they even did some fundraising, and there was some private funding that did like the scoreboard and things like that. So, there might be a way that the pool community can partner with us and help us raise money to cover some of the accessories, I guess you can say, to try to save some money that way as well.
Thank you. And again, I was just, I thought it was important when our swimming coaches said that they, they didn't think investing, you know, in Mayo High School Pool at this point would be a smart move, that they would prefer to share space at Century down the road. Ms. Amundson, and then Ms. Nathan.
I, I want to make sure that I understand what we're voting on when we make this vote. So, the particular motion that Director Nathan read will or will not increase our general fund budget?
I don't think we can definitively answer that, you know. The budgets for the referendum are going to be stretched to their limits with an eight-lane stretch pool. Until we get further down the design path, we cannot definitively say the referendum dollars can cover it. Anything that cannot be covered by referendum would fall under, fall to John Carlson and his team to finance.
And Ms. Nathan.
And I guess that, the question that Director Amundson just asked is sort of the same one that I'm thinking about looking at the, the resolution, because the resolution says a plan to design an eight-lane stretch pool with a bulkhead. Now, I, I don't want to talk about worst-case scenarios, but worst-case scenario, we make a design and we just don't have the money for it. What are, are we committing ourselves to building an eight-lane stretch pool at this point?
When, when the bids come back, you can, you can vote down the bid. You don't have to accept the bid.
We don't like to make a practice of it, but if projects come in over budget, there's options, you can reject the bids, redesign, you can value engineer to try to bring the cost back down. Oftentimes, in a, you know, building like this, you're going to end up losing, I don't want to use the term superficial, but things like seating or, you know, the bulkhead would be a huge ticket item. That would drastically change the space, but they're items that can easily be added in the future, if that makes sense. So, there's multiple avenues should that happen, but it, it definitely makes this more challenging.
But the fact of the matter is, we won't know what we can afford until we go through the process of designing what it is that we are looking to afford. We've done as much guessing as we can.
We'll, we'll know more price-wise shortly, right? So, just like we did with all of the other buildings, there's a, there's a sort of a progress of things, you know, there, as we reach different stages of design, right now, we're sort of in the pencil sketch or the concept phase, right? So, then as we get more of it figured out, I think in this case, we'll probably move to that schematic design phase pretty quickly, and then that's when I'll be able to quantify and tighten that down. So, within a couple of months, I'm not sure how, Dana, I don't want to put you under this time constraint, but I would think that within a couple of months, we get to that schematic design of the stretch idea, and then I can quantify the things, and then we can tighten that number down a little bit. And then, yeah, a couple of months after that, we get to the halfway point for design development, and we, we know more about the project, we've involved the city, we know we, the designs refined more, and we can tighten the number again. It's close, right? It's a million-dollar gap right now. Like Ian said, we're right, we're, we're right on that line of not having any wiggle room, you know?
I will also add too, that John brought to my attention, that we, what isn't factored here is the interest we're making on the 180 million that we've been gaining interest on as well. That's not, I mean, we also have access to a little bit of that as well.
Thank you. Ms. Amundson?
I just want to err on the side of caution and, and make it completely clear that I wouldn't want to mislead anyone and say that, first, I can only speak for myself, but I wouldn't want to say that we're all in on whatever it takes, because looking at a upcoming projected deficit in our general fund budget, I would have a very difficult time redirecting any money from the general fund to the pool projects. So, I, I just want to have it, you know, recorded and on paper that it, it wasn't some kind of a, a promise or implication that we would fund whatever it takes.
Well, I'm not sure if it's on paper, but it's on tape, so this will live forever. Are we, I think we're ready to vote now. The motion's been made and seconded. Unless there's an objection, I think we're ready to vote.
I'd just like to answer Director Amundson's question about the funding. I'm not sure what your plan is for the Mayo Pool in the future, and if we are going to use the facility maintenance bonding process to do it, it does impact the taxpayers, again, to do those improvements at Mayo as well. I think it's fair to point that out.
Thank you. Ms. McLaughlin?
I just have one other comment, because I think it was mentioned early, but perhaps hasn't been emphasized towards the end, that it sounds like part of the situation here is that there was a change in the code that was likely unexpected. It very much relates to student safety at Century High School, and I think that those are both things that perhaps weren't anticipated, but obviously, for student safety, if we need to, you know, spend more money or find money elsewhere, I think it perhaps is the right thing to do for that safety reason, and we can't avoid the change in the code.
Absolutely, thank you. All right, Ms. Severson, will you call the roll?
Thank you. And can we just revisit, who made the second on this motion to approve?
I did, Workman.
Thank you, Julie. All right. Director Amundson?
Aye.
Director Barlow?
Aye.
Director Garcia?
Aye.
Director McLaughlin?
Aye.
Director Marvin?
Aye.
Director Nathan?
Aye.
Director Workman?
Aye.
Thank you.
The motion passes. Thank you, Board, and thank you so much, construction, design team, numbers guy, Scott as always. It's great work. So, we, we look forward to seeing what the design looks like and how much it's going to cost. And John Carlson, I know you're there somewhere, just start figuring it out. It'll be fun, okay? Moving on to 7.07, Rochester Public Schools 2022-2023 District Calendar. This is a briefing item.
Yes, this is going to surprise some people. This is not next year's calendar, you've already approved that one. This is for the '22-'23 school year. Just want to remind those watching that we have a group called Meet and Confer, made up of cabinet members, one board member, and representatives from our teachers' union, and one of the tasks of that group is to make the calendar, and this is the first time in, since I've been here, 10 years, that we've had two, we're two years out on calendars, and I know a lot of our families will greatly appreciate that. For the '22-'23 calendar, the first day of school will be September 6th, last day of school would be June 7th, and there are three elementary PD days and two PD days for the secondary group. And then, if this is approved, we will bring back the Longfellow '22-'23 calendar at a future meeting.
Any questions, Board, Board members? Ms. Amundson?
I'm, I'm just wondering whether this is something that could sit and go on our consent agenda at the next meeting?
Sure could.
And Ms. Nathan?
I'm assuming that the after Labor Day start is, well, we're going according to state statute. If anything were to change, there's some legislation that's being proposed right now about giving flexibility to districts, et cetera, for when they can start. Is it our preference to start before Labor Day, or would we, would we think about changing it? What, what's the long-term thought on that?
Yeah, we actually talked about that, and we would, for this year, we would not, because that, that would shorten the time that we would have to move into the new building. That's the year that the new school's open, so we wanted to have a traditional start to give us that extended window to get the schools open and ready to go.
Okay, thanks. All right, if there are no more questions on this, and if there's no particular appetite to moving it to action, we will just take it as a briefing item, and it will go on the consent agenda for the next meeting. I don't see any objections, thank you. 7.08, approval to transfer real property. This is a briefing item, and it's for considerably less money than we've been talking about, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, John Carlson, Executive Director of Finance, will brief us on this agenda item. John?
Yes, wouldn't you know, I pulled up a map here a lot of minutes ago, and, and we didn't get to it, and then it went off my screen, so I'm just refreshing it real quick. All right, I'm going to pull this back up. All right, so, a few weeks ago, the district found out that we are potentially an owner of 9,000 square feet of land in a farm out in Iota. They figured this out after an auction recently where the farmer bought some more land here, and to clear the title, he's offering the district $1,000 to release our interest in that land. We obviously didn't even know that we had this land. It was, again, it came about through about four school district consolidations back between 1880 and 1968, and so again, we're recommending that we should just take the $1,000, clear our name off the title. There's nothing that we could do, as I zoom in here, we, we own these trees right here on the corner of the street, and there would be nothing we could do with that land. So, I'm recommending, or we're recommending that you approve this quitclaim deed and releasing the interest to the farmer. deed and releasing the interest to the farmer.
Board members, any questions? All right, um, Mr. Carlson, do you want an answer on this now, or?
Uh, that's your call. I think, um, I have led the attorney to believe that we would possibly act on it tonight and could sign the paperwork yet this week, but I'm sure they could wait, um, if, if you need to, so.
Seeing as how our next meeting isn't until April, I would like to move this to action tonight.
Second, Amundson.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to make this an action item. Um, Ms. Severson, will you call the roll?
Thank you. Director Marvin.
Aye.
Director Nathan.
Aye.
Director Workman.
Aye.
Director Amundson.
Aye.
Director Barlow.
Aye.
Director Garcia.
Aye.
Director McLaughlin.
Aye.
Thank you.
This is an action item. Be it resolved, School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the sale of the real estate interest to Gerald Merrum in, um, is approved in the amount of $1,000.
Move approval, Workman.
And Amundson.
Second, Nathan. Been moved and seconded twice. Ms. Severson.
Director Nathan.
Aye.
Director Workman.
Aye.
Director Amundson.
Aye.
Director Barlow.
Aye.
Director Garcia.
Aye.
Director McLaughlin.
Aye.
And Director Marvin.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Seven point oh nine, superintendent search firm selection. This is a briefing item. Uh, Mr. Carlson, I think.
Yes, uh, John Carlson, Executive Director of Finance, will brief us on this agenda item. John?
All right, thank you. Um, the, we put out a request for proposal on February 24th. It was sent to eight firms, and it was for the purpose of finding an interim superintendent search form, firm. On March 8th, we opened up four responses, and then over the next couple of days, um, a small group of people that included myself, Carl Bachan, Heather Hogan, Brandon McGraffic, uh, Jean Marvin and Melissa Amundson, we reviewed the proposals and we interviewed all four firms. We independently scored, um, all of the, uh, proposals, and, uh, then discussed it after we received the final scoring. Um, we really could go two different ways on this. Uh, the top two points, uh, getters were School Exec Connect and MSBA. And, um, we are recommending that we go with MSBA primarily because, um, the, if you look at just the, uh, written proposal scores and the, um, interview scores, that was the highest, um, amount of points that were awarded. Uh, the difference in, in price was about $3,500, but MSBA also includes some additional, um, board training that we thought, um, was useful, as well as they are willing to do an online, um, survey for our stakeholders as part of the process. So we felt like, um, um, they're a very good value for us to move forward with. So, uh, that is the committee's recommendation, and maybe Chair Marvin, you could speak to any holes that I may have left in that explanation.
No, I think that was accurate. Um, I, again, there were two firms we thought were both, would, would be a good fit. Uh, MSBA scored higher than the second one in terms of, um, the, um, our assessment of the expertise, uh, that they provided, um, during the interview especially. Uh, they will also do, Barb Dorn, who is their superintendent search person, will also do a workshop with the board, um, you know, as part of that price. Um, I, I would like to say that we are on a tight timeline here, and so I am hopeful that we can make a decision this evening so that we can call the firm that we decide on tomorrow and, um, and get going. Questions or comments? And Melissa, I don't know if you want to add anything?
Um, I think, I think you've covered it. We could mention that we did try to do some, uh, reference checking and didn't turn up anything, um, yeah, concerning or surprising.
Right. Mr. Barlow.
Excuse me, yes. Uh, for our viewing publics, they may not know what MSBA actually runs. So Minnesota School Board Association. And then secondly, um, it seems like there wasn't adequate time because of the tight turnaround, uh, to allow, uh, community input, uh, and I'm sure, uh, the search firm will, uh, have an active outreach for that. I'm excited already behind the fact that we have, uh, um, organizations already, you know, communicating their concerns and, uh, want to be a part of that process. So I commend, uh, the NAACP Education Committee for reaching out and forwarding their concerns that I'm sure we'll have opportunity to, to, to take into consideration.
Yeah, well, and, you know, obviously, we didn't get any community input on the search firm, um, process. Um, but, uh, the School Board Association firm will do a survey, uh, probably won't have time to do focus groups and that type of thing, but will do a community survey. Um, all their surveys are in English and Spanish, and they said it could absolutely be translated into as many other languages as we want. It will not be, um, a real in-depth because of the timeline, but, uh, that's one of the things that we as a school board need to talk about, you know, when we start working with whichever firm, is down the road, um, how are we going to interact with and listen to our community to find out what their values are, what their goals are, uh, when we get a new, especially a long-term superintendent? Uh, Ms. Workman.
Yes, I don't believe that the board has made a decision about who to hire for the, um, long-term superintendent, and I would like, I would like to make a recommendation that we do open that up, because there may be other firms who preferred not to, um, bid on an interim who would be very interested in a long-term superintendent.
Yeah, that's a good point. And to be clear, this is just for the interim.
Just for the interim.
Right.
I'd like to move this to action.
Thank you.
And to Amundson.
Okay, it's been, um, moved and seconded to move this to action. Any discussion? Ms. Severson.
Thank you. Director Workman.
Aye.
Director Amundson.
Aye.
Director Barlow.
Aye.
Director Garcia.
Aye.
Director McLaughlin.
Aye.
Director Marvin.
Aye.
And Director Nathan.
Aye.
Thank you.
Here's the resolution. Be it resolved, School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve MSBA as the interim superintendent search firm at a price of $8,500.
Move approval, Workman.
Second, Nathan.
It's been moved and seconded. Ms. Severson.
Director Amundson.
Aye.
Director Barlow.
Aye.
Director Garcia.
Aye.
Director McLaughlin.
Aye.
Director Marvin.
Aye.
Director Nathan.
Aye.
And Director Workman.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item seven 10, closed session. Uh, at this time, the board will move to closed session to discuss labor negotiations as permitted by Minnesota Statute 13D point oh three, and we are in closed session at At 9:49 PM. Ms. Amundson, will you please state the names of those present at the closed session?
Yes, it was Directors Amundson, Barlow, Garcia, McLaughlin, Marvin, Nathan and Workman, Superintendent Munoz and Mr. Bachan, Human Resources and Mr. Carlson, uh, Finance.
Thank you. Um, an agreement has been reached with Education Minnesota, um, and here is the motion. Here's the resolution. Be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby ratify the 2020-2022 collective bargaining agreement between Rochester Public Schools and Education Minnesota Rochester Paraprofessionals Association.
Move approval?
Second, Garcia.
It's been moved and seconded. Ms. Severson, will you call the roll?
Thank you. Director Garcia.
Aye.
Director McLaughlin.
Aye.
Director Marvin.
Aye.
Director Nathan.
Aye.
Director Workman.
Aye.
Director Amundson.
Aye.
Director Barlow.
Aye.
Thank you.
Eight point oh one, future school board discussion considerations. We have at this moment, uh, three, four issues, uh, return to in-person board meetings, school board calendar, school board composition, compensation, not the composition, and a strategic plan. I think we have agreed, uh, that we'd like to revisit the strategic plan at our April study session. Uh, do you have the suggested dates for a discussion or a presentation for, uh, any of those other three? Ms. Workman, I can't hear you.
Yeah, you should count yourself lucky when you can't hear me. The compensation committee met a couple of weeks ago, so, um, we have a recommendation that we could bring, bring forward at either of our April meetings, either the one on May 6th, or whenever the second one is after that.
Okay, so you got it ready to go. We'll look at that, at exact, and figure out which, which one it'll work for. How about the, um, school board calendar? How are we doing on that? We, I'm not doing anything, so easy for me to say.
We're having our second meeting on Friday.
Okay.
And I think we'll have a better sense as to where we're at, um, in terms of timing after that meeting.
Okay. And, um, Superintendent, do you have an idea of return to in-person board meetings? I know we were having discussions about the tech issues involved with that.
Yes, uh, they think they have it figured out. Uh, Cabinet's going to come into the boardroom to go through it, make sure everything works really well before we try, we don't want to try it out at our fir-, at a board meeting, so we're going to pretend that we're board members and make sure everything works correctly before we're ready to go. So, um, we haven't set a date to do that, but we're working on our calendars and try to find time to do that. So once we get a clean green light on that one, we can do the next meeting.
Okay, and my assumption is that we don't have to vote to do that. We just hear from you that we're ready to go, and then we'll go. Julie, you have something?
Yes, yeah, um, Mike, could you describe what the setup might look like if you've gotten that far?
Yes.
Would we be at the, at the board table or at tables on the floor like we are for study session?
Well, uh, three of you would be at the board table, and then the rest would be spread out down on the, the floor level, and then we would have a desk set up and, uh, get my directions here, at the end of, end of the boardroom, which is actually the west side of the building, or excuse me, the east side of the building. And, uh, and then we would, the, the podium would be where it normally is, because it has to stay in that, close in that area. But we're thinking people could come in one, then we'd have chairs set up in the hallway for those who want to come during public comment. They'd come in, sit at the desk, make their comment, and then go out a different door, and then somebody would let them know the next person could come in. Um, so, but yeah, we think we have the, the tactic, the technology figured out, but we want to do a run-through first before we try it out at a meeting.
Yeah, that sounds like a good plan. Thank you.
Good enough. And are there any other issues you want to put on the upcoming discussion considerations? Ms. McLaughlin?
Um, I had one more question about the open meetings. Do we anticipate that Cabinet would be there with us in person as well, or just the school board?
What we're thinking is just the Cabinet members that would be presenting that night would be in the Edison Building, up in their offices, and then watching the meeting and coming down when it's their time to present. But we, we can't do the correct social distancing if we have all of them in the, in the boardroom at the same time.
I appreciate that. Thanks.
All right, um, announcement, the next school board regular meeting, it will be April 6th, 2021 at 5:30 PM, and we are adjourned at 9:55 PM.
Thank you.